Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting of March 25th, 2022 to order. Do we have any special intentions? Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. We have a Kenner resident, Ms. Michelle Hogan, who passed away last Tuesday evening unexpectedly. Michelle was a loyal and witty, loving, loved gardening, cherished her friends and family, and loved the city, and she was a huge lover and protector of all animals, very involved with a lot of animal rescue. So I just want to make sure that we all remember her. She was very connected to everything going on here in the city of Kenner, and just to keep her in your thoughts and prayers, the family.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McKinnon?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to ask for prayers and thoughts for the Vineyard family. There are a lot of several things going on within the membership of the Vineyard that are very tragic, so if we could just have prayers for them in general. Thanks.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yeah, if y'all could say a prayer for my mom. She fell down Monday, broke her hip, got a total hip replacement on Thursday morning. So if y'all could say a prayer for her, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for the prayers of the council, the administration, and the audience for a good friend of mine, Mr. Glenn Thurmond from District Two, that came to some medical issues, and he went on to glory, but he will always be remembered, good friend of the family and the community. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
And also let's remember the citizens and neighbors in New Orleans East and Araby and St. Bernard Parish who were affected or impacted by the recent tornado, and be thankful that our city was spared any devastation. Councilwoman McKinnon, would you lead us in the prayer, please?
Yes, Council President. Lord, thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together to make decisions for our community and work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Amen.
Councilman Hayes, would you lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Do we have any correspondence, resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Simon?
Thank you, Council Chairman. I have a few things, a few speakers need to come up and report on a few things, but let me start with some things that are going on directly throughout the city of Kenner. Our recreation department, Mr. Charles Alon has done a great job throughout the city of Kenner with recreation and dealing with what he said to deal with. He had a report from, I think, last council meeting. But some good news that he's been working on is that the AVP Pro Beach Volleyball Tour will return to the city of Kenner. It will not be on the opposite side of the levee this coming year, this year, but it will be at Coconut Beach, which is city property. But he's been working very closely with Coconut Beach, who's been working with AVP. So that's a huge thing for the city of Kenner, a huge thing for District Three, obviously. It will be here in Kenner on May 27th through the 29th. That was here a couple of years ago, and we did lose it, but it is coming back. It was just confirmed this week, and then the AVP juniors will be here on a new tour stop on June 3rd through the 5th at the same spot, Coconut Beach. So you see, in May, and also the very next month, we'll have two events with AVP. These two sporting events will bring thousands of people to the city in our hotels and our restaurants. Our recreation staff are working with Coconut Beach to accommodate what they may need to host these two events. T-ball, baseball, and softball and soccer seasons are all starting in April. Numerous art and paint classes are available as well. So there's a lot of things he's doing with recreation, and also there will be a report later on FEMA with recreation facilities. More good news, our tax numbers, citywide sales tax revenues for March were up 29%. That's $860,000 compared to the same time this month last year. For the current fiscal year, we are up 30%, so that's $7.7 million percent compared to this time last year. That's a lot of income for considering the things that we've been dealing with. More good news with demos with General Services, I want to thank Mark Loriozo and his crew for arranging for 405 Williams Boulevard. We'll start the demolition on April 18th of the old Jan Deuses Building. So that's a city building. I know it's been sitting there for quite a while, but we finally got the okay to go ahead and demo that. Those are good things that are happening throughout the city. I am going to turn it over to, and I want to call up the fire chief, and he doesn't realize I'm going to do that, but I want to thank him before he comes up for, he texted me, called me the night that the tornado hit, and I think it shows what we do for other surrounding areas, how we reach out. His idea was to send people, our firemen, that were able to go immediately to St. Bernard and help those residents affected by the tornado. Council Chairman, you recognize them in the special intentions, and I do appreciate that because they do need to be recognized, the residents. But let's recognize, and I want the chief to give a blow-by-bill of what he did on this, but he took the initiative to call me that night and say, "I need to send some men down there." So I want to thank the chief for doing that. I know you all thank him for doing that, but it shows what we do, not just here in Justin Parish. We reach out across to other parishes, other areas, wherever you may be in the state of Louisiana. We have gone out to the state before, but going out for any type of need that they have, and this is what this fire department did under the leadership of this fire chief. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. The night of, is this on? Well, region, lately, in the past few years, regionally, we have approached all types of response to threats, risks, hazards, and stuff in this region, not just in the city, as a joint venture with all the different departments in this area. Actually, the regional chiefs, we meet once quarterly and sit down and have discussions about joint trainings, issues that's affecting each department, because none of us can stand alone and attack any major disaster that we are beginning to face these days, whether the natural or man-made. So we already have this relationship in place. So the night of the tornado, once I checked and made certain we didn't have any issues with inside the city limits of Kenner, the area that we are responsible for protecting, and realized that I called New Orleans, and they didn't have any damage, although it was reported on the news that they had damage, and they didn't have any. So I called the chiefs in St. Bernard, and it's great to have that personal relationship with those guys and that intimate relationship with them. And actually, our guys train with them all the time as part of the urban search and rescue team, which we are part of, Region Nine and also Region One. But we already have this relationship built, so it was just a matter of making a phone call, "Hey, man, what do you need?" He said, "Man, send me anything you can." He said, "We have a lot of devastation down here." I said, "Okay, that's great." I said, "I should be able to send you at least one rescue unit of trained members in urban search and rescue," which deals with the structural collapse and search in buildings for individuals that may be trapped or deceased inside those buildings. So that phone call was made to him, and I said, "Well, I need to get clearance from the mayor before I release any of the city's assets to another jurisdiction for any type of aid." So it was a phone call to the mayor, and he answered, and he was ready, willing, and able to allow us to do that. So I'm grateful to this administration for allowing us that opportunity to assist our brothers and sisters in other areas outside of the city of Kenner with whatever they need at any time, at a moment's notice of crisis. So we sent one crew down there, and they searched several buildings. I sent some pictures to Bob Ross, who is out, PIO, to post for you guys. So you'll see that we are making great strides within the fire department. We're getting our guys trained to that level to make those types of responses, because we have a lot of threats, not only inside the city of Kenner, which we have a tremendous amount of threats and risk and hazards that has the potential to create some sort of devastation in the community, but as a region, we also have those same threats. So I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to honor my relationship with other fire chiefs in this region and sending our guys to that area to assist them.
Well done, chief. Any comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, men and women, for us, please.
I will thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. I have two more that I'm going to turn over to Ms. Foshee, but let me go to Timothy Shaw. You should have a copy of the annual action plan from her department, so Mr. Timothy Shaw is going to come up and give a presentation on that, and then we're going to go to one more person before Ms. Foshee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To the council, I come before you this morning in reference to our annual action plan. Every year, the city of Kenner has an entitlement, and it gets an allocation of funding from the federal government for our CDBG funding. But before we do that, we have to have meetings with the public to get their input on how they want the money spent throughout the community. We've had a public meeting in South Kenner. We had a meeting at our HRC, and we're coming today before you just to get input. Anyone who wants to give input on the annual action plan can send comments or written comments to CPD programs at kenner.la.us. But what we're doing right now, like I said, is getting citizen input. It's required by HUD to see how the citizens, how the community want their funding spent. In our last action plan, which was upended by, of course, COVID and Hurricane Ida, so we had to make some changes. But some of the things we did, like public services, we're partnering with the mental health provider, because that's one of the things that was brought up during one of our public hearings. So I tell people all the time, it's very important to put the input on how you want the money spent. Right now, we're working with a new provider. It's Noel. We work with, I work with them in Jefferson Parish. They help with code violations. Once we can, you know, get people back to some semblance of normalcy and code goes out, we'll have assistance for them, especially those elderly in our community, to get help. So like I said, it's only through the input that we get from you guys as the council and from our public that we'll go ahead and formulate our plan. So what happened here, because we have a planning schedule, we will, we've put out applications to nonprofit and to the agencies of the department. I don't know if you know, we were able, with our coronavirus funding, the police chief put in, I mean, sorry, not the police chief, the fire chief put in an application. We were able to buy fire rescue because we needed AEDs on all of the trucks. We were able with that funding, CBD, CBG funding, because of the coronavirus, the increased need for medical services with the fire department, the city didn't have to front that money. We were able to pay for that. So we're working with all of, like I said, not only our city departments, but other nonprofits to see and do an application on how to best use that funding. That application period is going to end April 5th of 2022. Once we get all of the applications, score them, formulate a plan, I'll come back before you, council, to adopt that plan, and then we'll send that plan to HUD for approval, because at the end of the day, they have to approve the plan. So just want to give you just an update of what's going on in the community right now. If you get any questions through your offices, you can direct them to me at my office and through my email, tshaw@kenner.la.us. Do you have any questions?
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, attorney, Shaw, for coming today. Thank you for the presentation. I think two things. One is about the budget always, as it relates to prior budgets, where we are now, did it go down, did it go up? But maybe I'm wishing.
Yeah, we actually had an increase from the previous year, and we were at 482. We went up to 541. We have not gotten the numbers from HUD yet for this year's allocation. What we did get is the overall number from HUD as to the allocation throughout the country. That number went up 3.5%. So we anticipate getting another increase over what we did last year, and the more money we get, the more programs we can fund, and the more things that we can do throughout the community. So we are looking and hoping for an increase when it comes down to our jurisdiction as an entitlement community.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, obviously, with the pandemic going on, things are affected, and our ability to move forward and provide the services are always, always important. So thanks for that, and, you know, as, I have some more questions for you, but I will ask you later about getting some information to maybe at the next meeting to address that.
And I'm coming before you later this meeting, what just different action plan amendments, and we have to amend, because when crises come, we have to make some changes. Like, as I've come before you before, we made changes to do our rental assistance program. That was the most requested in the community for rental assistance program in our community and Jefferson Parish as a whole, as a result of coronavirus, and especially as a result of Hurricane Ida. Since coronavirus started, and we received about $360,000 for CDBG and about 340 through our home funding, through our consortium, so about $700,000. We are out of funding. So as we do things, as things happen, you know, we had funding allocated for our Annie Washington building, but because of the storm came, we have now reallocated. And so every time I come to you for amendments, because something has happened that we won't, because we never want to not use our funding and have it and lose our funding. That's never what we want to do, because there are too many needs in the community.
Right, and that will lead to my next question, as, because there were a time, a couple of years ago, that we were being held accountable for not spending the money in a desired timeframe or fiscal period. Where are we as it relates to?
We don't have that problem, Councilman. And I'm happy to report, even though some time in Jefferson Parish, we always met our deadlines, and we continue to meet our deadlines. We have a deadline on our CBG funding of April, of April 30th. It is our test, I'm sorry, May 2nd is our test. They look at all of our spending through April 30th, and we've been spending, like I said, through our rental assistance program. We just completed some streets that needed work to be done. So there are things that we've done to spend the funding. One of our coronavirus projects was always working with Delgado. We've had citizens of the community who've been able to attend Delgado. We've paid for that funding with CDBG funds, because they met the requirements. Those students have graduated, and now they're going on to be medical assistants with guaranteed jobs, so they'll complete that project in eight weeks. So those are citizens in our community who work here and who will be able to continue to live here in good jobs that they've been promised through Auctioner.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And like I said, I'll, myself or either my assistant, will send you some additional questions, information to ask and to maybe add to your next presentation to the public.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Shaw, do you have a number of students that?
We had four students. We had like 20 people who came to our informational session. Four of the students completed the first part of the training, so they're going to do an eight-week training, and with that eight-week training, they have guaranteed jobs at the end. So they, actually, Delgado contacted me, they're going to be doing another informational, so we're going to be holding another informational, and it's a reboot your career. A lot of people, you know, lost their jobs through the pandemic, and this is giving them an opportunity to find maybe new employment in different areas, and they're getting the training for free through Delgado, so they don't have to come out of pocket, because the city of Kenner, through our CBG dollars, are paying for that to make sure. And like I said, they're being used in our city for people who live, work here, and now have guaranteed jobs that come through the program.
Great, thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, you mentioned to me, Ms. Shaw, that the mental health is an issue, and you're getting funding for some issues regarding that with our community. And in addition to that, you mentioned AEDs as well. So those are two topics I wanted to follow up with you on.
Absolutely.
If we can't talk later, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Like I said, I'm open to answer any questions. Like I said, it's so important that we make sure that these needs are being serviced. Like I said, that was a hole in our, that we needed to make sure that there was a, because they're doing so much help to the ambulance service, and they're going out and making it there first, they need to make sure there was an AED on every truck. So the fire chief contacted me, filled out his application, did everything, and then we were able to pay for that. So like I said, that was something for the benefits of the entire community.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Shaw, thank you. Mayor?
We're going to, I'm going to call up Ms. Candace Watkins with Economic Development. She did receive $150,000 for Rivertown improvements, and I'm going to direct that to LaSalle Landing. There's a lot that needs to happen at LaSalle Landing, a lot of things in Rivertown, too, but I think that's an area we need to focus on right now. Ms. Watkins?
Yeah, just to share that, we were given this money earlier from the last session, the regular legislative session, for Rivertown improvements. We initially had hoped to spend it as matching funds for the pier project that we are continuing to pursue, but we won't be able to do that within the timeframe that the money has to be spent. So we have just asked to switch our relevant activities to include repaving the parking lot at LaSalle's Landing and repainting the lamp posts in the large parking lot on Williams in Rivertown.
Any questions?
Hope not.
Well, she can come back. You have to speak quickly. Ms. Watkins?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate that. What is the timeframe of those improvements? So when does the dollar, when do the dollars have to be?
June.
So this June?
This June.
Okay, so in the next three months? Okay. And then also, I do have an additional question. I know that they got funding for, that we received some funding for sidewalks at Kenner Discovery. What's this, can you update me on the status of that as well?
We are in the process of procuring an engineer for that project. We have still not received a project ID number from the state to enter into the entity-state agreement. I've been chasing that number since we were awarded the money in August, and I started following up more vehemently in November. I've contacted them about five times, and their last suggestion was that we proceed with the engineering. They don't pay for that. They only pay for the construction while we continue to wait for a number, because whoever assigns the numbers has retired, and evidently, they have had difficulty replacing that person. So we're still chasing down the number, but in the meantime, we're going to go ahead, go forward with the design that we need to have to do the sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
The number's nine.
Thank you.
Just try that.
It's just a little more complicated than that.
Thank you.
Try 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
If it works. My garage door opener is, okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last presentation is Ms. Foshee. It will be a little lengthy, probably, but there's a few things for us to go over. Thank you for your time.
I'm not lengthy, but some of the presentations may well be. As we discussed when we first met post-storm, the issue with the vehicles, that we would do a true-up at six months and talk about what our options are. Gave you that heads up last week, but, last council meeting, but Kenny Melvin is here to actually tell you what information and research he has done, where we stand right now, and what his recommendations might be.
Get my glasses on, I can't see. Okay, so back in September, we purchased those vehicles, right? As of a week ago, depreciation on those vehicles was $69,000 roughly, somewhere in that area. So with the forced labor account that we're doing with FEMA, we should receive back in reimbursement roughly $100,000. So we'll be $30,000 to $40,000 to the good on that, but the recommendation that I have is the seven of those vehicles that are the high trim that we're calling them, we should immediately sell those as soon as possible and replace those with just standard base model F-250s. The problem with that is it's about a nine-month waiting period to replace those vehicles. So I think we need to move on that as quick as we can, and as those new vehicles come in, auction these off and get our money back, and then keep doing that as we go along. But it's, the process with getting vehicles now is very long, because I understand it's chips, you know, the computer chips. Some of these vehicles that are being sold today are without chips if your power seat doesn't work, because a chip is not in the vehicle, and they will call you six or eight months down the road when that chip comes, and then you can have your vehicle working like it's supposed to, as you thought you were getting it when you bought it, but that's not happening, so. That's my recommendation, is to sell those. Let's move forward, and then we can talk about the entire fleet, which is, 75% of that is older than 2015. So we're in a dire need for vehicles. So I don't know how we're going to go forward, but that's my recommendation. We can discuss it with Ford or whoever the contract is. We had three vendors. I visited those. They have no vehicles on the lot. They can't give me a date on when they can get those vehicles. So that's kind of where we are at this point with those vehicles.
Councilman Brannigan?
Kenny, do we have a list of the vehicles that are going to be sold or auctioned first?
Yes, that would be the seven higher-end vehicles.
Okay, and I know that we have 22 F-150s that were purchased five, leased five years ago, that were in the fifth year of the lease. Are we buying those at the end of the lease?
I believe that's what happened.
Is it a dollar buyout? I had heard it was a dollar buyout, and they also had, we leased some heavy-duty trucks. It doesn't say how many. We've been paying about $150,000 for the F-150s a year and for the heavy-duty trucks. I don't know how many heavy-duty trucks that is. So that lease, those leases should end at the end of this fiscal year, and so we're going to have, we got 22. So you're saying that 70, how many vehicles do we have total in our fleet?
The citywide, excluding the fire department, is roughly 160. 24 of those are in salvage.
Say that again?
24 of those vehicles are salvaged. They're sitting there, they're nonusable. So we're looking to auction those off as well. I don't, and, you know, traditionally, our problem is we drive vehicles until the wheels fall off. So by the time we do sell them, we get $200, $300 for them. We should be rotating this fleet, I think, like every five years would be a good time to do it. Those vehicles you're speaking about, they are going to be five years old next year, you know, the 20, F-150s or whatever.
Yeah, it was 22 of them. So what you're saying is that the fleet has to rotate every five years.
That would be my plan.
So if we have 160 vehicles, and there's 24 of them that, or salvage vehicles, because they're destroyed, we're going to get like 20 cents for those at auction.
Yeah, probably.
And so how many vehicles do you need? How many do we need?
I need more, I need more than 160 citywide. I probably need 190. But the plan would be, and it's not every five years, it would be an annual thing, that you would sell vehicles at auction, and this would be a 10-year process, basically, to get your fleet up to an acceptable age level. If you do it, you know, it's going to take, everybody has to follow the plan, just 10, 15 years down the road. If you continue to sell those vehicles, as you sell them, they're going to get newer when you're selling them, so you're going to get more money back on those, which helps you fund the next fleet.
Right.
So, you know, you're not taking so much of a loss down the road. It's going to be minimal if you continue that process.
Mr. Melvin, what did you say the depreciation was on the vehicles purchased last year?
At this point, it's 69,000, I believe, is somewhere around that number. 69,500, I think. That's on the 20, so it's $2,500 a vehicle on average, I guess, somewhere around there.
And you suggest selling seven of those, correct?
That, the seven high-end ones, yes. As quick as we can do that, and then we can evaluate the other ones as we go, as we can continue to get. the other ones as we go, as we can continue to get new vehicles, we can keep rotating them out.
I mean, if, if we could auction those vehicles and lose 2,500, you're saying depreciation went down to 2,500, you're talking about a lot of money for those seven vehicles coming back and could, we could probably purchase, once the fleet, once the F-150s are available, probably two, maybe two and a half trucks for one of these.
Right, I, I agree, but I don't, I don't, I wouldn't buy F-150s.
Okay.
I would buy F-250s.
F-250s.
Yeah, they're more versatile of a truck. Anybody can use it. You can do multiple things with it.
Councilman Wilma?
Mr. Melvin, as far as the, the auction, I want to get into that aspect. Do we hold auctions for vehicles in the city of Kenner?
We do. I think normally it's every November, while our, it's in November. It may not be every November, but it's usually around November, probably every other year. As we acquire vehicles to go into the salvage and auction, that's when we're going to have it, but it's normally in November.
And how many vehicles do we typically auction when that comes around?
Right now, we have 24, you know, sitting there. I don't know about the previous auctions, but it's been more than that.
Is there any other manner in which the, the transfer can be done other than an auction by a government entity?
I, I can't answer that question. I, I have no idea.
This is the typical way to do it though, is by auction?
Normally, it's auctioned. That, you know, you can't, I couldn't come up and say, you know, I want to buy this vehicle. It, it doesn't work that way. I know that it's not going to happen.
So, if we have depreciation, then we have an auction. We take one of those vehicles and auction it. A lot of times, that, 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 that vehicle will be sold at a lower rate than what we anticipate, correct?
Well, the, the depreciation value that I have is the, that's the starting auction value. So, it, those vehicles may sell for more than what I'm, you know, the numbers I'm giving you because they're just valuable vehicles. Trucks right now are at such a high demand that people are paying actually more than they're worth.
Is there a minimum that we can set on it to where?
We can set minimum prices on anything we sell.
Okay, and we do that?
Yes. And the auctioneer, if we do a live auction, they come in and they evaluate everything and put a starting value on that before we start.
And do they charge fees to do it?
I'm sure they do. I'm sure there's a percentage or some kind of fee they get.
The auctioneer is, is basically, it's a, it's a private entity that comes in and helps auction?
Yes.
Government vehicles and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and wow. And that may vary who that auctioneer is year to year, correct?
Yeah, I think we, we would do a, like a RFP-type thing to get, you know, see who that would be.
Okay, and you anticipate at the end of this year, when it rolls around, comes again annually that we, and you're recommending that we do, how many vehicles?
Well, right now, that's seven in addition to the 24 that we already have in salvage. So, the seven are going to obviously gather more money for us, but I recommend doing it on an annual basis. That way, we can, if you take that money that you acquire from the auction and you turn that directly over back into purchasing vehicles, even if you just get one, at least you got a new vehicle that, you know, you have acquired because you sold basically stuff that you weren't going to use anymore.
And where do these auctions take place?
At our yard, public works yard.
At the yard itself, okay. And we put out advertisement and so forth?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, real good. All right, well, then that's, and what month you said that that typically occurs?
It's normally in November. Now, we can do it any time of the year, but it's normally done in November.
All right, th- thank you, Mr. Melvin.
In, in those vehicles, Mr. Melvin, the, the seven we're talking about, are those, are those still being used right now or are they parked?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's why it would be difficult to say, okay, let's just take them out of service and sell them right now because I need something for everyone to, you know, use, but obviously, we don't want those vehicles. We want, you know, a regular pickup truck, you know, but that's what we had the option to get at that time.
Councilman?
And I'm assuming we use in the Jefferson Parish contract to buy the vehicles? The new vehicles?
It could be a state contract or Jefferson Parish contract.
Because an F-250 is $23,101 on the state, on that contract.
Okay.
So, if we have, I would like a list of the seven vehicles because I know, I, I have a list of all 20 and I know what we paid for them at the time, so I want to see which seven you're talking about.
Okay.
And then, I'm a Kelly Blue Book of, and see what the number is on those vehicles.
Okay.
But I mean, if we say, if we could get, if we could get close to what we paid, since the demand is high, then, you know, if we spent, I think they averaged about 70 grand a piece, so that's, that's, that's a bunch, we could get probably three trucks for one.
Right.
Or very close to it. So, we could end up with 21 trucks by selling those seven.
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, it was, I thought I went to the wrong place when I went to the dealership because there was no vehicles on the lot. They had five SUVs, that's all they had.
Right.
And, you know, two pickup trucks.
And Council Chairman, that's what I was going to bring up. I, I agree because we had the same discussion, I believe it was yesterday or the day before I did with Mr. Melvin, but what is, let's say we do what Councilman Brannigan's talking about and I do look forward to doing something like that. What is the availability of getting those vehicles? I don't, that's what we, the council, there you go.
No, I, I understand.
That's, that becomes, because I agree with you. We need to look at getting more for what we have, right? Let's get more vehicles for what the vehicles we have. However, we can't afford to sell them and not get it for nine months. How would, what would that do to your fleet?
We need to order these vehicles and then as they come in, start, yeah, start that process.
Let's remember that. That's the process we have to look at here, that as they're coming in, we're turning them back in.
I don't, I don't know if we have to pay for them ahead of time or not or order.
I don't, that's something.
If we enter into an agreement to purchase those, then we don't have to come up with a payment ahead of time, I don't believe. I'm not sure how that works.
That's something we have to discuss with y'all, right, up to the vendor.
If, if we're looking at something nine months down the line, whatever the blue book is at this point.
It's going to go down.
Right.
But, but the deal right now is used car values are, are through the moon.
Right.
You know, so by only losing 2,500 a vehicle for those seven vehicles, we should be in a pretty good position selling those because they're high-end vehicles. I mean, you're talking about XLTs, you're not talking about a base truck with rubber mats.
And that's what we're trying to go to is the base trucks with, you know, rubber mats. They're just more suitable for what we need, but.
Right. I think we should be able to get at least two trucks for one truck, so, on these, these vehicles or very, or maybe a little bit more than that.
Yeah, and you know, I don't know what the, the cost of steadily escalating on these new vehicles as well, so don't know how long they're going to hold contracts or how long that works.
Yeah, I mean, that $23,000 figure is a low figure for a 2022 F-250. I mean.
Right. And my conversation was, we would be lucky to even get close to a 2022. It's probably going to be 2023s.
Okay. And there'll be, we, I understand, I hope everyone, the prices are going up when we go to 2023s.
Yes.
We just hope that the bottom doesn't fall out on the ones we have when we try to get rid of them.
I, I don't, I don't foresee that happening.
Okay.
Yeah, I see these vehicles keep, they are going to maintain their value. That's the way it looks.
Okay.
Y'all have got me so psyched up, I may go buy a car after this.
Good luck.
Yeah, you, you might buy one, but I don't think you're going to drive it off the lot. That's, that's the problem.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question in terms of just overall fleet. The, I know that every year in the capital budget, we have planned, you know, to lease more vehicles.
Right.
Is, are you guys planning on looking at evaluating that and actually doing an overall level so we can, you know, kind of take a whole look about that?
Yes, ma'am.
And as you, okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm in, I'm in the middle of that process actually now. That's, I could have a lot more information, but I'm in the middle of it at this point.
Okay, perfect. That's what I, I was concerned about that because obviously, you know, as you said, we, you know, some people's strategy is to ride it, drive it until the wheels fall off, which is my strategy.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, obviously being proactive in the city, you know, we, we need to have working vehicles that are of, you know, very high condition, so we want to make sure that we're being proactive and planning those things because we can't serve the city and do the thing, our work if we can't get around our city, so.
Exactly, and you know, that process, it just may, it just makes sense to keep our vehicles rotating because you're getting back at least more money than you would if you wait until, you know, 10 years down the road.
And, and eventually, you know, hybrid and all of, you know, the more efficient, they're also more efficient hopefully as time goes by as well, so.
Right.
Councilman?
Kenny, on these vehicles, how many miles a year are we putting on these vehicles?
They vary. It, you know, it varies, I would say, at least 10,000.
Okay.
I, I, I can't, you know, that's, that's just a guess, of course. I could look at it, but.
And, and you're thinking that we need to rotate them out every, you want to get to a schedule where you're rotating out every year, long, long-term?
Your oldest one goes in that process, you know, always your oldest one goes in that process and that way, you're going to continue to, like I said, get a decent return on it instead of waiting until it's worth nothing.
I'd like to be involved in that process because I'm a car nut, so, you know, if you want my help, I'm volunteering.
All right.
That's all we need, right? Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Melvin, for coming today and, you know, this conversation goes back. I can vividly remember speaking with Mr. Ronnie about this, so this was always something that he had a pet peeve for, would always stress to us about the, the antiquated vehicles that we have, how long we've had them, trying to submit a plan, so we are, we are still here today. So, obviously, we haven't done as much since then to get, to get this plan into place. You add in all the variables with hurricanes, pandemic and all that.
Right.
Now, it's even further back. So, it's, it's good that we are, you know, attempting to, to try to resolve some of these issues. One of the things that, that I'm hearing you say as far as it relates to the vehicles themselves, and my understanding, because I don't know anything about vehicles, is that, yes, it is the vehicles people think about driving, but did your assessment include equipment or even equipment that are, that may be used with the vehicles that also we possibly could put up for auction? If we're not using them, or if we don't have the capacity in the vehicles that we have to use them, did that include that, that?
I did not get to that point yet and I am in the middle of doing that.
I thi- I think that is great because we, we may have some vehicles, we may have some equipment that vehicles is used on, that if we don't have the capacity to, to, to move or to occupy, then we need to think about, do we really need those and how long will it take for us? So, please, as part of your assessments going further, please look into that and let us know, one, if there are some like that and the possibility of putting them up for auction as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
And look, we have made progress because when I started in 1988, I actually had to wear rain pants when I drove a vehicle if it was raining.
Eighty-eight? Okay, that, 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 that.
It rained, it actually rained inside of the vehicle, so, you know, that was a long time ago, but we have made progress.
They were, they were probably brand new 1988.
Yeah.
But, so, so now, you know, I'm just saying, and then again, to, you know, just to show my adoration for Mr. Ronnie, that his, his, his focus was always on that, trying to upgrade the, the system, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilma?
Thank you, and, and I just wanted to, to cover one issue that I think it's important just to be mindful of, of course, is insurance coverage. When we dealing with F-250s or F-150s and you're having a, a more pricier vehicle, a newer vehicle, so forth, insurance coverage on that, can, can you expound on that as far as?
I think we have a blanket coverage and I'm not sure, you know, I don't.
We're self-insured, so at the point I think you're making is if we had an accident, the cost of the repair to the city would be higher. You're, you're correct with that.
And, and we're looking at a lot, well, as far as all these vehicles, I know you had recently purchased several of these F-250s and having done that, have we noticed an insurance spike?
We're self-insured, so we don't actually pay insurance, so the place where we're actually going to feel that is if we have an accident, it's going to cost more to repair an F-250 than an F-150. So, fortunately, we haven't had any accidents since then.
Let's keep knocking on it.
Let's keep it that way, yes. So, but at the point you're taking, you're making is, is well, were we insured, yes, our insurance would be higher, but since we're self-insured, it's going to catch us on the end of repairing a more expensive vehicle. It just hasn't happened yet, so keep driving safe there, Kenny.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melvin.
All righty.
May, may I ask one question about the, the La Salle Landing? Didn't we get money from DOTD in 2019 for the parking lot and different things in that area?
That was the bike grant, Candace, are you familiar with that one? The upgrade to the bike, bike, not bike path?
It was supposed to be for bikes.
Yes, and there was like a, I don't say fueling station, but where you would air up and, and all of that. That was the Mike and Scranton.
Yes, it's a Trailhead grant, so it's going to, it, we still have it and we're getting to the point where we'll have a project to use it for hopefully soon as a result of the TSW's planning process and all of that, so we're.
Do we know the total cost for this La Salle Landing projection?
I think the parking lot is 70,000 and we're, we're getting.
But all the work we're trying to do there, the pier and such.
I can't pull that off the top of my head. I think that the Trailhead grant is like 170,000 plus. It's in that. We want to work on the ADA ramp. The, the bigger project that I'm working on in, at that location is to reconstruct the pier and I'm working on a grants application with the Economic Development Administration. It's just a, it, it's a long process. It, I hope to submit that grant later in the summer.
But we don't have a total for the pier, the ADA ramp, the parking lot, the painting, the lights?
What I'm trying to get now is a budget for the pier and the ADA ramp going to the, the bike path.
Okay, thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for that. So, I heard you say repair the pier, so obviously you meant.
No, rebuild, reconstruct.
Rebuild the pier, yeah, because it is way, way, way past repairing. And literally having a conversation, meeting on the levee with the Lieutenant Governor, who also mentioned and expressed support of a number of things.
I have met with him about it.
So, if you have, that is also, you know, good for us to maintain that, that relationship with it and again, as Councilman, the President said, when you get the numbers together for it, we would all like to obviously take a look at that.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Foshee?
If I could just make a couple of comments to clarify a couple of things. So, the auction would have you setting the minimum value. The numbers that he gave, the, the reduction of 69,000 is based on actual amounts that we would be able to sell these vehicles for because they were taken back to Lamarck and said, we sold them back to you, how much would you pay us? So, at that point, you have basically what is an offer. That could be your minimum amount, but I believe that people will pay more than that because that's what they pay you to trade in, right? And we all know that if you buy a vehicle off the lot, it's more than what you got paid for it to trade in, so that's the minimum. We, we may have lost less than that. That is offset against the 100,000 plus of, of force account for the vehicles. So, at the six-month point, if we just put a pin in it now and say, okay, let's stop, we are 31, at least $31,000 ahead of the game. We have $31,000 more than we had at the time that we bought the vehicles in the first place, but clearly, we can't get rid of the vehicles because we can't replace them at this point, so I just wanted to share that. The last auction was 2018. They're roughly every two years. You know, in 2020, we weren't really in a position to be auctioning, so we anticipate that the auction, in fact, it's, it's not just cars. They do cars, they do all the surplus, you know, basically everything that we have left over has to be auctioned, so they are working on that at this point. Some discussion is being had about online because a lot of governments are moving to online auction formats. We've never done that, but assessing what that would cost, would it be cheaper? Would it be, would it create more problems? When you have a vehicle on the lot, they can actually come and look at the vehicle, they can get in it. They can't really drive it, can they start it? We let them start the vehicle, okay, so they can start it. If you're trying to buy it online, it might be a little more challenging for vehicles, but anyway, that, that is in the process now, so we hope to get everything that is auctionable off of the books, including, well, off of the books so that as of next including, well, off of the books so that as of next year's budget, it is, those are not debts that we are carrying. I think that's it on that.
Thank you.
So the next discussion really is about the city insurance and where we are with insurance and the FEMA claim. Good news, bad news about the Musburger Lino press box. So the bad news is that it, the insurance company isn't going to pay anything, and FEMA isn't going to pay anything. Because of the condition of the press box beforehand, they don't believe that the hurricane caused more problems. I think we could argue that it wasn't leaning over before, but, you know. The good news is that were we to demolish it, we would have undermined the structural stability of the bleachers themselves, and then would have gotten into either upgrading, replacing the bleachers, which is excruciatingly, excruciatingly expensive. So we now have a contractor who's looked at it and said, they can rebuild it using the back wall in place. The back wall of the press box is also the back of the bleachers. If we can rebuild it using, leaving the back wall in place, then we do not have to upgrade bleachers, we don't, do not have to replace bleachers. So the overall cost ultimately to the city is going to be less. At this point, we're getting, Mark, we're just getting an estimate at this point. We don't actually know how much this is going to cost, but we do know structurally this is going to be better for the overall system.
Correct.
Okay. So with that, FEMA was here this week. Liz can bring you up to date on that.
Excuse me, one second. Counselor?
Thank, thank you. I just have one follow-up question, Ms. Foshee, as far as the insurance. You said, we were self, self-insured for motor vehicles and so forth. I just wanted to ask you as far as liability, how was it, how does that work for the city?
We're self-insured up to five hundred, and then we have a surplus policy above that.
For liability?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So basically, when we come in here to you guys and we have the meetings to talk about settling cases, we're writing checks out of the city's account. Up to five hundred. Above five hundred, we have, we have surplus lines.
Okay. And, and as far as the vehicles are concerned, again, if we increase our fleet, that, that doesn't impact the cost for that?
What would impact the cost of that would be us having a bunch of accidents. So they're really going to rate us on our experience and think if we're good drivers, it's gonna, you know, excess might be less, but there's no, I wouldn't say there's a direct impact to having more expensive vehicles and then the surplus policy, simply because it's above five hundred. So they have a lot of vehicles and a lot of other things they can spread the risk across.
Thank, thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Foshee, I'm gonna go back to the Musburger Lino Stadium with rebuild of the press box. Yeah, it has served many, many worthwhile years for all the recreation, high schools and everyone else, semi-pro, whatever. So what, so you're saying that the, to replace it possibly would mean to compromise the stadium? Now, the stadium goes from the thirty-five yard line north to the thirty-five yard line south. You know, that's, that's how it, how it goes. And so is it just a section that the press box is? You're not talking about replacing the, the, the two ends of it, just the middle section? If I, and maybe Counselor Brannigan can help you, but I believe the press box is in the center, so it wouldn't include all the stadium seats?
I think the issue becomes the fact that those stadium seats are not ADA compliant. And so when you start making any repairs, you have to bring them up to code. If we do not have to touch them, we do not have to make the repairs or bring them up to code. I don't know, you know, not being a football human, I'm not sure when you talk about thirty-five to thirty-five, if that means that there's multiple sets of bleachers or one sets of bleachers, that would really be the, Tanya Han would need to come out, take a look and tell us, this is a, if this is a freestanding, like a separate building, you don't have to, you don't have to bring all the other buildings up to ADA. So if there's a part of the bleachers that is considered separate, then maybe the others wouldn't have to be touched. But we know for a fact that with the removal of the building, that the most, the biggest expense for us was going to be having to do something about the bleachers because we were affecting their structural stability. And you've exhausted the extent of my engineering knowledge, so if you need more questions, I need to bring help.
Yeah, well, I, I think you've gave enough, and I think everybody understands, if you use the concept of a modular building, modular homes, it comes in pieces.
Right.
I believe, and I'm no engineer either, that the stadium is put together in pieces, which means the center part of it is, 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 would maybe have to be because of ADA, but the two on the opposite ends may be, may hold that we don't have to replace it.
They might, exactly. And again, I don't, I don't know how they apply the fifty percent rule, if it's more than fifty percent damage to everything, it's got to be fixed. So that would be something we'd have to look at. If we were to go that direction, absolutely positively, we would have to figure that out, and we would save as much as we could and not, not go, go whole hog replacing things we don't need to replace.
Yeah, because obviously, the city of Kenner, with it aging, buildings and everything else, ADA is a, would affect almost every building that we own. So we have to always be conscious of that. And to be able to upgrade when we have the opportunity to do that, to make it more ADA compliance, in compliance. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brannigan?
So, Ms. Foshee, if we go and take the press box down and put a container up there, then it triggers that we have to upgrade the whole stadium to ADA compliant?
First off, I'm mourning the loss of those really cool containers, too, because the, the images you and I looked at, that was a fabulous press box. If you can keep the back wall intact, then you can put anything up there, whether it's modular containers or anything else. Our challenge really is just going to be the cost. When we thought it had to come down, we will have to put something back. Now the back wall, if I, and Kenny or Mark or somebody who's actually met with this guy, Mark, did you meet with him out there? If you don't mind coming up and giving some more details. So when we thought the back wall had to come down, that's when we had the issue. If the back wall doesn't have to come down, I don't know if we can put up the mod, the, the.
No, if you, if you add a modular press box to it, you're modifying existing bleachers as are, and you can't do that. We have to replace it all and bring it up to code.
And that press box is hooked to the stadium?
Yeah, yeah. See, the, the steel framing is attached to the, to the bleacher system now. If we were to remove the steel framing and the press box, we're compromising the integrity of the bleachers, and we have to replace it all. Everything else, the framing and everything is good. It's, it's what we built around the framing that is rotten and bad. The wood around the press box, the walls, the floor, everything else, the steel structure there is, is fine. We just got to replace everything else.
Okay, but Deborah referenced the back wall. Isn't that the wall that's leaning back?
Yeah, well, it, it kind of blew off the foundation. It, it, center of it blew off, so yeah, it's kind of sticking out over the floor level.
But we can save that?
We got to replace it. It's got to come off, and we got to rebuild it.
Which, which wall are we saving? Is it the front wall?
We, we're gonna replace the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
The whole framing of the press box is gonna be redone. Just steel framing around it, the pillars on all four corners, and the joists that are going across is gonna stay there. We just built the wooden frame around it.
Okay, so, Mark, if you can clarify, because basically, I'm repeating what I heard in our meeting, and I obviously didn't get it straight. Something is remaining that's going to allow us not to have to upgrade the bleachers. What is that? What is that?
That's, that's the steel framing.
It's not the back wall.
No, it's not the back wall.
So the, the base of it is staying?
Yes.
And what's built on top is going to be new? All four walls?
All four walls, right.
Okay.
The four walls attached to the steel frame. It's got metal pillars on every corner.
When Deborah said they had a wall that was going to remain, all four of them are destroyed. So that's, that's why, I understand now. So it's a base, the, the beams on the bottom are staying, we build a new press box on top of it?
The beams run up to, through the press box, and we just built the, the wood around the, the steel beams.
Perfect.
All right.
And that should be pretty quick.
Well, we got to get a couple estimates, but yeah, it should be.
Because we need it ready for September.
We, we're shooting a half.
Counselor?
Yeah, so, Ms. Director.
Uh-oh.
Oh, your mic died.
Why don't you go ahead, Counselor McCarroll, I'm sure.
Okay, so to be able to expand on engineering Foshee's limits, would you know if that stadium is just one big stadium? Which seems kind of hard to bring a whole base in.
It's, it's hard to tell. I would say it's the whole bleacher system, probably in three sections, but it's all bolted, connect together.
Right.
So you might possibly be able to, to swap out one end or the other. Again, that would be probably a question for, for Han, for, for Tanya and them. Because they, they installed it, and it, it's been there for forty-something years, so.
Yeah, my, my only, my only reasoning for asking that is for cost, obviously. If we have to get rid of the middle because of.
Well, everything's fine. We don't have to get rid of any of it. Unless we modify a section, then we have to replace it all.
Got you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glorioso.
All right, so we're going to turn it over to Liz to talk about the meeting with FEMA this week and their inspections and the plan going forward.
Yep, so like Deborah said, so FEMA came out this week, they inspected buildings A, B, and C. So we should have that report sometime early next week from them, so that we can sit down and compare it to what our insurance gave us and then our own assessments. So it's kind of like a triangle. We all work together with the, with the different assessments to try to build out the project. We are expecting them to come back the week of April fourth for Ponchatrain Center, the whole Musburger Lino complex, and Buddy Lawson. So that'll be the next three that they do. So we haven't received confirmation yet, but hopefully I'll get it in the next few days. But they were looking for dates for April fourth. Just moving forward, we'll kind of just roll out the three, three properties at a time. Obviously, the Ponchatrain Center is very large. It's probably going to take a few days for them to do that. But as FEMA has more time on their hands to send out people, we'll start adding different properties to the list.
Counselor?
Yes, I just want to clarify. You said that you, when do you anticipate hearing back or discussing buildings, the assessments of building A, B, and C again?
So we should receive the reports from FEMA by next Wednesday.
Wow, that's really quick.
Yes.
And we, can you share that with us?
Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, Director, as it relates to a schedule from the company that provided tarps for all of the recreation facilities, do we get a better update of when they will be able to come out to, to redo the tarps?
Yeah, I think Mark can.
Actually, Southern Cat is in town today. They're at Buddy Lawson right now, addressing the issues that were still leaking in there, from there to going to Fire Headquarters, and maybe one or two other places that were on the list that still had some leaks happening. But they there this morning.
Okay, so they're going to address all of our buildings that are experiencing?
They're just addressing ones that, since the repair that they did, that we told them about is still leaking. And we only had two that I'm aware of, which was Buddy Lawson and Fire Headquarters, that are still kind of, from that patch job that they did.
Okay. Yeah, can you, can you keep me abreast of that, their assessment, once, once they're?
They're out there right now, looking at it and making repairs if need be.
Yeah, so let me know when they're complete. That's what I guess is I'm saying. Let me know when they're completed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you again, Mr. Glorioso.
Okay, just one more, and that would be the temporary housing, or temporary occupancy for the city of Kenner. Because as we, as we pursue the Council's mission to move back to eighteen oh one, we still have to find a place to put ourselves for a couple of years while that is going to be completed. So you have, you have, last time we gave you the appraisal on the Macy's, you have a packet in front of you right now that is the proposed lease from Macy's. It's also a proposal from CRC for modular units. The, the estimate is from last fall. I spoke with Justin today. He said, projected ten percent increase just because of the scarcity of materials. Another is the breakdown of some, some square footages of, of possible usages. This is not a recommendation. None of this is a recommendation. The person who's collecting the data for presentation to you, either at your committee, if that's scheduled, or at the next council meeting, either way, then it is Leon Contravasprey. And so I'm going to ask him to come up just to talk about the methodology, what he's collecting, and make sure that that is the way you want him to go. Because if we need to go a different direction, or there's more information you need, now's a good time to let him know that.
Thank you. Morning, Council.
Good morning.
So we, wow, Mark's taller than me. I didn't know that. We wanted to touch base with you in regards to the request that was made a few council meetings ago regarding a move out of Macy's to a temporary facilities until we can move to a permanent location. So what we did was we gathered information, various departments gathered information on the three options, and two of them you have in front of you. The third one that I wanted to go over with you is the city facilities, that as an option. Again, this is not a recommendation. This is just for us to present the information that we found so far. This information is incomplete in terms of dollar amount that it would cost. We're not there yet. With, once a decision is made about the direction, we would need RFPs, bids, et cetera, before. So committing to those numbers now would be, would not be in our best interest. So to give you, to give you a rundown of what we're talking about for the city facilities, the required space that we would need, the minimum required space that we would need moving out of Macy's is fifty-five, approximately fifty-five thousand square feet. Now, the city facilities that would be available for use, and those would be five gymnasiums and the upstairs meeting room at the Ponchatrain Center. Now, the five gymnasiums that I'm going to name are those that are not affiliated with a school right now. So if we decided, if the choice was to move into them, the, the five would be Butch Dewey, Woodlake, Lincoln Manor, Susan Park, Buddy Lawson, and of course, the upstairs meeting room at the Ponchatrain Center. Those would give us approximately the square footage, slightly more, that we would need if we decided to go that route. There are several things to consider, of course, if this was the option. Just to give you a highlights of a few of them, because we've, I've contacted, I've been in touch with the IT department, with, with general services, with Public Works. And we would need to get them to a base level of occupancy for the public and for offices. The Wi-Fi and fiber upgrades, electrical upgrades that would include adequate wiring, upgrades for a needed electrical load, backup generators for each facility, and additional electric outlets for lighting, et cetera. There would be general build-out needed for cubicles, walls, restroom upgrades, ADA compliance, lobby areas for the general public, and flooring upgrades to accommodate power cords. Because as you know, in the gym facilities, there, it's just, it's just flat flooring. And fire prevention, we would need a fire alarm system in each one of those facilities, not including the Ponchatrain Center. Parking, we would need adequate parking spaces. A few of these facilities probably would need upgrades to that, including ADA parking. Daily maintenance. And not to forget, a lot of these buildings do need general IDA repair to begin with before we even get to, we even get to an upgrade for city usage in terms of office space. Now, of course, there's also a general loss that goes along with this. And the main thing, of course, is the loss of five of our recreation facilities, four of which are in Districts one and two. We would lose every gym in District one if we took this route. Again, this is not a for or against, this is just the information that I've collected so far. The, from the Ponchatrain Center standpoint, the loss of the upstairs meeting rooms could loot, could, could be a loss of approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, not including economic impact. And something that Mr. Doug Dote had brought to our attention yesterday, which we didn't even think about at the time, was we would be losing emergency shelters if needed. Now, we have not had to use our facilities as emergency shelters, but in the highly unlikely event, we would need them for distribution sites or any kind of emergency use, those would be, those would not be available. So with the two that you have in front of you and what I've just, what I've just presented, we would like to know if we're going in the right direction. You know, we can discuss this in committee as well, but we wanted to present this and get your feedback as to if these, if we should continue on this route, or there are other ideas you would like us to explore, or where you would like us to go from here.
Counselor McCarroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Contravasprey, for this. So I'm just going to, just off the top, say, if you're telling me to take out of, take out of existence four of, three of the gym, all of the gyms in District one, I can tell you in front of God and country, I can't support that, you know. We just can't do that.
Yes, sir, I agree with you.
Summertime is coming. So we need to look at it a little, little differently to find other wa, other buildings possibly, the city of Kenner, other structures to rent, because that is disassing a lot. You know, you're talking about, which it includes also Butch Dewey, which is also in, in the south, you know, south of veterans. So you're talking about taking it out. So I.
Absolutely, I agree.
Obviously, that is a, that is a hard pill to swallow for that. So, yeah, I.
Right. Oh, no, we, we completely agree with you on that, but we wanted to present it just so we could keep it on the table or take it off.
Yeah, well, I'm only one person. You can take it off, for as I concern. Just totally to take that away. I'm just going to be honest with you. We need to look at this a little bit closer and look at other options. And, and maybe we will, now that we know, can suggest some things, too. But I believe that plan, in its totality, is, is.
It's a non-starter, yes, sir.
It's a non-starter for, for me, you know. That's, I'm just going to say that.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir. I'm, I agree with you. I don't want to take any gyms out of the right.
I don't want to take any gyms out of the recreation program.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's just that it has been mentioned before by the council, let's look at some gyms. When we look at them, I don't, I'm on record already saying, I don't want to do gyms. I think taking anybody's gym, District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, is going to be an issue, and I don't think we should be doing that. Your perfect point is what I said a few months ago, a few weeks ago. The summer's coming. There's never a good time to take a gym out of commerce, not commerce, but out of recreation program, but particularly during the summer. So as we try to get them repaired through FEMA, let's not put City Hall there. So it's just hard, Councilman, to look for buildings that we own that wouldn't be gyms, but let's look at maybe, which is the proposal from CRC, which we go back into rent, it's not city property, but you could put them on city property. It could be more expensive if we're paying here, but I think this would be the option if y'all wanted to move from here.
Yeah, yeah, and again.
So I agree with you.
Yeah, I totally agree with you on that, and, and obviously, listen, you have to show it to us so, so we're able to make a decision. Don't, don't not tell us, because, you know, that's, that's not good. I just think now there are, there will, there could be another hybrid way of doing things as opposed to taking it out totally, and I think that's what we have to look at. And to agree with the mayor, to take, in the beginning of the summer, to, to, you know, to do that is, is not a good, it's just not a good plan to do that. So let's look at it. Let's keep, let's keep looking at it, and hopefully there are other people who may be able to submit, because this is, we're just talking about it now, other information as it relates to cost for additional ways to support other structures. Whenever that RFQ or RFP goes out, we will be able to get additional support to see exactly, because we all will have to be conscious of the budget. So I, I, I agree, but thank you for that information.
Yes, sir.
But Leon, we do not have any other city structures.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right.
Unless there are that, that I haven't been told about.
That's, I think that's where we had the.
The secret buildings we haven't told you about.
Yeah, if those secret buildings, that's.
We're stuck between.
They're all District One, he knows where they are.
Yeah. You know, even, even buildings, and when, and obviously, when the mayor said, we don't have any, we don't have any today that are in the capacity to house people. So it may mean even fixing up some of those buildings, as opposed to not doing anything to it, fix it up so it can accommodate. That could be part of the plan as well, not just to take it off the table. So it's all of that as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Foshee? Oh, I thought you were starting to say something.
I did. I'm in response to what Councilman Carroll is saying, we do have a list of all city properties. So what we can give you is a list of all city properties, and if you see other properties on there you want us to explore for this purpose, you know, obviously, that many gyms and the Ponchartrain Center is not a contiguous use, right? It'll be nice to get back into 1801 and actually have some contiguous use, so you're not having to get in the car and drive to another location. But, so that being said, if, if there are other properties on here that you would like for us to explore, absolutely, and we'll submit that to the committee, and we'll submit that to the council as well. So again, Councilwoman, and when you tell us when you're ready, we'll be ready, or we'll have something for the next council meeting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you, and please submit the, the buildings, all of the buildings, so we can look at it. And being from District One my whole entire life, I am used to non-contiguous. I have the river, I have the railroad tracks, I have rail lines. So nothing in District One is contiguous. It all flows like that. So it is something we are, we have become accustomed to and used to. So let's, let's continue to look at other, other venues and ideas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brannigan?
I agree with Councilman Carroll. You know, we trying to build our recreation department back up, and taking gyms and putting city facilities in it, I don't think that's a good idea. And I know we're between a rock and a hard place, and I guess we need to look at, the thing we have to look at is the cost of the venues and net to the city, what it's going to cost us in the long term, because 1801 is going to be, I would think, a four-year project minimum. So rebuild in 1801, so.
Yeah, wherever we will be temporarily, it's a long temporary.
Yes.
Council. Mayor?
Again, the administration is not in favor of moving into gyms. This council asked us to go find gyms and other facilities that would be comparable and able to house City Hall. This administration is just doing what this council asked us to do. We, I think we're all agreeing to the same thing. We, none of us want to use gyms. We were just asked to go do this. We have got to look at something for the future, if this council wishes to move out of this building that we're in to go somewhere else. We're just, we're very, very limited unless we probably go rent something else. And maybe what we're all saying is rent something else on city property. But I still think that's going to be more expensive, and I think that's what your report shows. But if that's what this council wants to do, we will work together with y'all to do that. But again, this administration was asked to go look at gyms. We went and did it. We, I said when we were doing it, we don't favor this. So I think, again, Councilman Brannigan, you and I are saying the same thing. I just don't want anybody to leave from here and say, the administration wants to move into gyms. No, actually, the administration is okay right here. But if this council wants to work with us to go someplace else, then we'll do that until we get to 1801. We know where we're going, but I agree with you. We may not be here. This council may not be here in four years. So four years from now, this is what we're going to have to deal with. We're going to have to deal with a new location at 1801, but it's going to take us four years, this council, this administration, to get there in the future. So we're, we're all saying the same thing.
I, I have a question. Do we, have we worked out the rent with the owners of this property? I mean, do we know what the rent is?
What you have in your package is their proposal. When you, when you look at what we gave you last week, which was the fair market value, and you look at their proposal, we've got a $3,000 a month delta. We have to figure out if there's a way to, you know, you guys are going to have to decide, will we pay 60,000, or will only pay 57? 57. The 90% is from FEMA is only going to be a fair market value. So FEMA is not going to give us 90% of that extra 3,000.
Well, I'm not worried about the 90-10 split deal. I think we need to look long range, because if we, if we, if we end up being here for four years, that 90, that 90% is going away in 18, at the 18-month mark, right?
Not necessarily. So you have the opportunity to present your case to FEMA for an extension, and we completely plan to do that.
Okay.
I think with the devastation we had, we're, you know, we're, it's good communication between us and the state, and, you know, they already went out, typically at six months, they already went to a year. So I think getting the extension probably wouldn't be, you know, a problem, as long as FEMA is seeing us move forward, not just sitting doing nothing, then they're usually favorable to the applicant.
I thought we were on 90-10 for 18 months.
We're on 90-10, yes.
Oh, so it was six months and then another year, which made it 18 months?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, but I think we, if it's $60,000 a month, at 720 a year.
And then my only concern, just, you know, we'll do whatever y'all want, but FEMA approved this temporary site. If we tell them we no longer want to be here and move somewhere else, there, we do run the risk of them saying no, especially if that move increases the amount that they have to pay us. So that would be my only concern, is just, we'll do whatever, and we'll build our case, and we'll present it to them, of course, but just keep in mind, if we move to something that is three times the cost of this facility, FEMA may not reimburse us for that.
Right. So, so FEMA is already locked into 18 months of this building?
No, no. So we, we had to present them all our damages. This is the temporary site that we listed. It's not locked into 18 months. We're not locked into anything right now. So the city hasn't even signed the lease, so that's what's in front of you now. We're not locked in. All I'm saying is if we change the location, we will have to go back to FEMA in a formal request to do it. It's not impossible. I'm not saying no, I'll, I'll do it, it's no problem, but I just want to be transparent with all of you that there, there is a possibility that they say no.
Yeah, because when you look at the CRC deal, it's $2 million down and $196,000 a month. Is that?
Yes.
What I'm, so, I mean, if we're paying 60,000 a month here, that's stupid to do that.
Exactly.
It makes no sense.
Exactly, and so that's our thing. This is definitely the best case for the city as far as dollars, and I can understand every other factor, and that's why we're willing, you know, we'll, we'll work with whatever y'all want, but as far as dollars goes, it doesn't really make sense to have to put out $2 million and then about $200,000 every month when we could stay here for about 60.
Just, Councilman? Council Chair? Yes, sir.
These, Councilman Brannigan, these are the things that we looked at early on. I know we talked to y'all about it, that trailers, we hired a real estate agent to tell us where we could go. It was this building and also the Burlington building. Came back into commerce, thank God, Burlington. This didn't look like it was coming back into commerce. That's why, and we had talked to y'all, that's why we chose this, because you're 100% correct. It's cheaper to stay here until we get to our real home. So we're just doing what y'all asked us to do, to go look at these things. I think now you're seeing, look, I, I get it, it's been six months since we all talked about it, you know, we've talked a little bit about it, but since we'd made this initial move, it's been about six months. You're seeing it again now, it's not changing for the better. And in fact, it is, actually, it's a 10% increase on the original bid from getting trailers. So I think we've done the right, all of us have done the right move to this spot, temporary, until we hear, we hear Joe's wishes two council meetings ago to go back to 1801. So let's, let's focus on that, and I, I hate to jeopardize what Liz is talking about, changing the course of action until we get back to our real home.
Oh, I, and I agree, and I think that our constituents would, you know, realize that financially, I, I mean, mostly 100% of business decisions made with a calculator. So this is not rocket science. And I think that, you know, if we go out and we look at these different things, thank you for doing what you did, because it definitely will shed the light of, you know, what, where we need to be and where we need to go. And do I wish Macy's was still here and I can get a suit 50% off? That'd be great, but, you know, that's not an option, and it's been a while. But showing our constituents that we're looking at the numbers and making sure that these numbers are right is important.
And, and added to the gym whole discussion is you also including the Ponchartrain Center in that, correct?
Correct.
So I said before commerce, I was talking about the commerce and the Ponchartrain Center. So we taking three buildings, three, three rooms?
Three.
Yeah, the whole second floor, three rooms out of potential commerce. So I know there was a tenant up there in one of the, two of the rooms, and we used one room, I think, for storage, but if we need to put those back where we need to be for commerce, we're taking those buildings out too. Again, this building is not taken out of commerce. Now, look, today for tomorrow, if somebody wants to move into this building, we need to talk again. We need to look at where we're going to be, because you said, you said before, you wish you could come in here and buy a suit. Yeah, we want to, if anybody wants to come in here that puts this building into commerce, Candace is working very closely to make sure that we're not in the way of that. But until that day happens, and look, let's be honest, I think since 2017, nobody's been breaking the door down here to get in to have something here. So until that happens, this is the, the best way to handle this economically, and also for us economically, to make sure that our constituents aren't deprived of anything. So again, y'all asked us to do this, we were happy to do it. I think we've proven one more time that this is probably the best spot to be until we get back to our real home. This administration has no issues with going back to 1801 Williams, but it's going to, I'll use your words, Councilman Brannigan, four years, probably so, with the way things are going on, and also with government processes that we have to go through, it's going to take at least four years to get going with it.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Director. For clarity, you said that FEMA has not given the okay even one month or 18 months for this facility?
No.
So we are doing things.
There's no deadline, is what I meant to say. It's not, it's not like a month by month. We submitted, they've accepted this location, and we're going to continue to do extensions, request, time extension request, but we're not doing anything wrong, if that's what, like you.
No, I'm, I'm not insinuating.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at the, the cost.
Yeah, it's not like.
They haven't approved to say yes, the 54,000, we don't have a problem with that. They haven't said that.
No, we haven't, we're not to the place to submit that yet.
Right, so I, I'm, I say that to say, since we are doing things in thirds with FEMA, maybe we ought to move this one up a little bit as a, I don't know where it falls on our list, but maybe we should move this one in that top tier of thirds.
Yes.
To start discussing.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a category B type of, type of project, so my goal is to close out A and B as quick as possible, category A and B, before we actually start the, the construction repairs of these buildings. So we're kind of be, it's two different teams, so we'll kind of be working side by side to, to fix the buildings, but also close out things like this and debris projects.
No, no, I guess, just, just, just to be clear again, we're doing thing in, things in.
Yes, but FEMA doesn't have to come here for this, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so.
It's not a site visit type of project. It's a project where I just submit paperwork to them for approval. So I'll be doing that while the FEMA crews come out and inspect buildings.
So that's your plan, to do that?
Yes, so that we can move. Yeah, I just have a few things going on.
I'm just saying, you got a couple of things, but I'm saying, this should be at the top. I think it should be at the top of, of them to start that, that process.
Yeah, of course.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
All right. That's, that's my opinion, maybe other people may want to add into that, but I think this is an important piece, right here.
It is.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brannigan?
And Councilman Carroll, that's why I have been, you know, adamant about asking, how much is the rent here? I don't want to hit a 10% number, because that may never work out, you know? We need to know, how much is it going to cost to be here without FEMA? If we get FEMA, that's phenomenal, you know? Liz gets them to come in and, and pay 90%, we're way ahead of the game.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to express my appreciation for going through all these steps. This is so important, and we need to air this out at these meetings, so the public can hear what's going on, because there are major issues that we have to try and figure out. And I think periodically, we're going to have to do this, not just this, this time, we're going to have to repeat it again, unfortunately. We're going to have to reassess it and, and determine what is best for the city as we go along, because again, two years, four years, whatever the case may be, we need to reevaluate it constantly, because this is, this is a big cost to the city, no matter which direction we go into, but we want to do the best thing we can to be most economical for the city. And I appreciate your hard work on this, Mr. Controvassprey, for doing this. This is so important, and the administration as well, giving us this breakdown in these options. It's so important to understand it, and I think we've expressed it very well here today. And as Councilman Carroll said a little while ago too, there's always the potential of a hybrid, so that, I, I think that's important. We, we might be able to do something like that in the future. So thank you for hashing this out at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Foshee?
Thank you.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. I can say it in ten seconds. In addition to the fair market analysis we did before coming into this building and learning that only this and Burlington, the same agent has been asked to go update it. Now, go and see if there's anything else out there for us, because if there's anything else out there, whether it's one or 10 locations, if there's space for us somewhere else, that's another option that we will bring back to you, just so you can make that decision as well. A built-out office space will have less built-out needs than we're going to have, because anything that's out there already being used as office is already going to have a lot of the things we're going to have to pay here or anyplace else. So that would be the optimum, I think, in terms of cost. I think what, what Liz was saying is, that Ms. Herron was saying, is that if we tell if we tell FEMA, we'd like to go to a cheaper location, they're probably not going to say no. So if we can find a better deal, the challenge is going to be, we want to go to a more expensive location. So, anyway, that's, that is it. We'll let you know as soon as we have the fair market analysis back, so we will know if there's any other space available.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Under the consent agenda, I have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of February 18, 2022. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number 2269-22, First Louisiana-Mississippi, to hold a public gathering on April 1st, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the purpose of a celebration for high school robotics teams and volunteers competing in the first robotics competition Bayou Regional at 4603 Williams Boulevard in Lake Town, Kennesaw, Louisiana. That concludes the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote on the consent. Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carol?
Yay.
Segura?
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings. Item eight A is a resolution authorizing a public hearing and approving amendment number two to the fiscal year 2021 annual action plan of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program for the Community Development Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to open your public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carol?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We're now in a public hearing. Uh, if there's anyone in the audience wishing, wishing to address the council, please come forward now. I believe Ms. Timothy Shaw is here to answer any questions you may have also.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes, Council. This is what I discussed earlier with you in, uh, early portion of the meeting. We're amending our F1, FY 2021 budget. Um, because like I said, we had the loss of the Annie Washington Building as a result of Hurricane Ida. We allocated, reallocated funding to street repair, um, in a lot of moderate income areas. So this is just moving money around so that we don't lose it, and we've actually are also repeat, also completed those repairs. So, uh, we're just, like I said, moving the money around, so that we can spend it, the best use for those funds and, and spend those funds by our timing list deadline in April.
Thank you. Councilman Carol?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Attorney Shaw. So there, you say that we are complete with the renovations at the Annie?
No, 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 they're not complete. We had damages, extensive damages at the Annie Washington Building.
Okay, so-
There's an engineer report, um, that I can give you a copy of that recommends the demolition of that building. So we're waiting on insurance funding to see about the demolition, but we're gonna bring that to you in one package to make sure that the building is rebuilt. So it'll be one package to say, we'll demolish the building and then we'll go back to, um, rebuilding the building. And, and we've already kinda talked to the, um, engineer at that point to say, we wanna do some things better with the building and its configuration, and the services that they will provide. So this is gonna give them the opportunity to make sure, cause it was a two-story building, there was always a concern about it being ADA compliant, cause, you know, the stairs. So they're looking at doing a one-story building for those persons that may come in that may have, um, some disabilities that, you know, so we wanna make sure that the new building will be ADA compliant. But like I said, we're not gonna bring it to you until we are certain that it's a two-four po, package because we use federal funds in the building. They allow you to demolish, but we have to go back and rebuild it. Other than that, the city would have to repay any funds that we put into the building. So we're not gonna do that. We are going back into the building. But the first thing has to come is the insurance proceeds. And then after that, we can go back with federal funding. So they will allow us to do that because we're, it's, it's being used for our public service and public community benefit.
Well, thank you for the update, and I'm sure the people in the Veteran Heights, Susan Park, Lincoln Man are, are glad to hear that. We understand, you know, money's being moved to address, just like we all have to do with our own personal budgets to something, but we're not abandoning the building itself. It will go back on the plans for the next FY. By that time, we should have more information from the insurance company on the structure itself, the plans and all of that, to, to get it rebuilt.
Yes, and like I said, with CDBG funding, it's the funding of last resort. So it's requiring us to use any other funding first, being insurance proceeds, if FEMA's gonna assist us with it, and then it'll be the CDBG funding that be put into it.
Thank you. We look forward to the, to the rebuild of the Annie Building. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to close your public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carol?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Carol?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning from final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,954. An ordinance amending the chapter 15, traffic and motor vehicles, Article II, Section 15-21 of the Kennesaw Code of Ordinances. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'm gonna call up Mr. Schreiner and just go on up. Uh, this is, uh, something that's been going on for a few months now, but, cause the need is there around the Tom Benson School to have more signage, identifying it as a school with the proper crossings. So would you please go through this and explain where we're at with this?
Yes, Councilman, be glad to. This, this, uh, legislation is just asking approval for the installation of the two stop signs on 34th at the intersection of Texas. The, the school came to us some time ago, their, their issue is that, uh, that there's excessive speeding in this area. Uh, what you see on the right is, is a crossing there. That's, that isn't in place yet, but we're gonna do that separately. Um, the crossing guards has, has been having fits there, because she's, the, the car's speeding down there, and she's trying to cross the, the children at that location where you see that, that red striping. So anyway, this, this ordinance is just asking for your permission to install the stop signs. And of course, the, the stop bars are in red, we're gonna put them in white. And there's other signs on here that the, uh, general services will, will install as well. But first of all, we would like to get these stop signs installed, and also, we'd like to take care of this crossing over here. The signs will fol, the other signs will follow.
Thank you. Uh, obviously, this is something that is definitely needed, uh, based on the number of complaints that you've received, I've received. So, uh, certainly in favor of doing this. Now, some of these other signs with the crossing, those are things that we don't need to approve here, they're just gonna get done through your office.
Yes, sir. We, we're just asking for approval of the stop signs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carol?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Councilman Segura, for this. Obviously, you know, children that attend this school, you know, possibly come from different areas. So this is something, safety, that, that you brought up, we're addressing. It's, it's something great for the school. I might ask that, uh, everybody, if you can just say, I know it's Tom Benson, but you'd be surprised, the number of people don't know the old name of the school. So if you can tell us that, so everybody can have a point of reference with it, yes.
Roosevelt Middle School?
Yes, it's the old Roosevelt School, and I, it's just amazing that, you know, it's been there for a year, maybe two, that the number of people just don't know that that is the new name of the school. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carol. Thank you, Mrs. Schreiner. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Carol?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 12B is summary ordinance number 12,956. An ordinance that the Kennesaw City Council limit the amount of a contract that the mayor can enter into without city council approval to $50,000 per calendar year cumulatively. Multiple contracts per vendor, entity, and individual is subject to the $50,000 calendar limit. Any contract amount that exceeds the $50,000 calendar year limit must be brought before the council for approval. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Councilman Brannigan?
Oh, yes. I, uh, I put this legislation on because, uh, I received, can you hand this out? Uh, I received a list of the contracts that the city has, and, uh, the council clerk is handing out an Excel spreadsheet. I converted it because the dates were all over and, uh, everything wasn't in line. And when I looked at this, uh, document, and I looked at the amount of contracts that have been signed off on by the mayor and the administration, it kinda startled me. In 2021, there were $5,843,000 of contracts that were under, uh, $100,000. Now, the, the charter says that the mayor has the authority to sign off on contracts under $100,000. But when you look back at the years, like in 2011, it was 90,000. 2015, it was 423,000. 2017, it was 668. 2018, it was a million six, then 3 million two. So these numbers kept doubling, and, uh, that's what kinda started me with the amount of the contracts that are signed. So, I feel that the council needs to have more input on this, and I don't care who the mayor is. Um, I think that it should be set at 50,000, and also, per vendor, per either calendar year or fiscal year, it should be set at, if they go over $50,000, the council has to approve it or decline that, that piece. Um, it's a situation where I just, uh, I'm very uncomfortable with the way the numbers have gone, uh, in the last 10 years. They've gone up tremendously. Uh, when you look at 2017, uh, that's when Mayor Zahn took office. It was 668, and now it's 583, I mean, 5,834,000. So, that's why I put this, uh, on the agenda. I have talked to the city attorney, uh, in regards to this. We talked about different things. Um, she has given an opinion that she thinks I'm violating the charter with this, and I have talked to several other attorneys and past council members, and basically, on their feedback, I don't think I'm violating the charter. Uh, the mayor still can issue a hundred thousand, uh, under $100,000 contract, but if the, if the, if the vendor is over the $50,000 mark, basically, uh, it would have to come back to the council for approval. That's why I put this on, uh, the agenda today. Now, one other thing that was brought up when I was dealing with Ms. Sala, basically what has happened is, she said that if it is a charter violation, it has to be changed by a vote of the people, which would cause a special election. That, that will cost the city a million to $2 million to hold a special election, and that is not an option in my eyes. Uh, that's a total waste of money. So I'm just trying to fix a problem that I see where the amount of contracts has gone up a whole bunch in, uh, the last, uh, five, six years.
Councilman Segura?
Oh, thank you. Uh, and, and whereas I do understand Councilman Brannigan's intent here, and, and fundamentally, uh, go along with it, I first would think that, that's why we even need personal service contract, professional service contract. If we're purchasing a service, why don't we just do it as a purchase? And anything that we did, we bid out, and then it goes to the bidding process and then comes back over to the council, cause anything over 10,000, or 5,000 to 10,000 and above, comes to the council for approval. So if you look at it that way, I don't know why we need these professional service contracts. Let's just put every service needed out for bid, and let it take its course from there. But with that said, uh, the charter is what we live and die by. It is the Bible that guides us, and the current charter clearly does say in section 2.09 that anything 100, any, any contracts, 100,000 or more, shall be by ordinance. This was changed in 2012 because there was no limit, and the council at that point in time had concerns. So, uh, it was brought up and after discussion, it was initially brought up as a 50,000, uh, point to say anything over 50,000, that, uh, it had to be approved by the council. But it went to the vote of the people as the charter required. So that is what set the 100,000 in the charter. The people voted for this referendum to put it in place to say, 100,000 contract or above, go to the council. To change it, and I don't care if you change it to a dollar, it still has to go through the vote of the people to change the charter. That's what the condition of the charter says. So, that's my only concern, Councilman Brannigan, is that, yes, we do need to change this dollar amount, but it gotta go through a vote of the char, it gotta go through a referendum, so the voters can change what they put in place. They put in place the 100,000. So to bring it back down, we need to put it back out to a vote of the constituents with an explanation of why we want it to come back down. But like I said, I just soon do away with it and put everything as a purchase and just bid it out. So with that, I do have that concern of why we think we can, by an ordinance which already has force submitted by, so it's assumed that it's already been approved, that an ordinance can change the charter and not put it back out to the vote of the people. So that's a fundamental problem with this legislation and its process, not the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Sala?
Thank you, Council President.
Hello.
Thank you, Council President. Um, and, and, and just speaking with Councilman, what Councilman Brannigan said, yes, we had a great discussion yesterday.
Ma'am, could I ask you to take your mask off so we could hear you?
I can speak louder. Um, like I said, yes, uh, as Councilman Brannigan did state, we had a great conversation after the last council meeting. He asked me to look at that, um, and we spoke, had a great conversation yesterday, and I told him my concerns. That one, my, it is my belief that it does violate the charter as in the form. This ordinance as written, if it was passed today or voted on by this council, would have no effect of law pursuant to section 10, specifically, section 10.1 of the charter. In order for the charter to be amended, or repealed, or anything you wanna add to it, it has to be given, the vote has to be by the people, not by just this council. And I'm the one who found the, uh, that Councilman Segura was talking about, the way that particular part of section 2.09, talking about the 100,000 versus 50,000 cap, that has to come in front of the council. When we found the backups, and Ms. Natalie and Ms. Teresa were great to give it to me, the backups in 2012, that council, it was done by resolution, and if you look at the backups, they amended it. Like, it looks like they were considering 50,000, and then I guess maybe from the floor, they amended it to 100,000, but they followed the proper procedure. And pursuant to my conversation yesterday with Councilman Brannigan, he asked us to start drafting it. We drafted it. I contacted the Secretary of State. I found out that the next, um, election would be the November 8th one, the resolution, if it was adopted, and we drafted it, and I sent it to Councilman Brannigan yesterday evening. Um, and if he wanted to adjust anything, to let us know. Um, all that being said, that was just for the 100,000 going down to 50,000. I do believe another part of Councilman Brannigan's legislation, this ordinance, where he's talking about vendors, it would probably violate the mayor's expenditure power. And I'm offering at this time, before you all vote on it, let me, if you, I understand Councilman Brannigan spoke to other attorneys, and I have given you my legal opinion that it violates the charter, please allow me to seek attorney general opinion on it, because I have seen some attorney general opinions about mayor's expenditure powers and what council powers can be, but not on this specific point. So I wanna be able to seek attorney general opinion on this, on the expenditure part regarding the vendors. However, either way, both parts of this ordinance, as it's drafted, that you all have in front of you, if you voted on it, it would violate the charter and it would have no legal effect. Per the charter, section 10 states, again, in order for the charter, this particular thing, the 100,000 going down to 50, which is specific in section 0.2.09, ha, if you're trying to amend it, which is fine, whatever the council agrees and wants to do, we will assist you with doing it properly. It has to go back to the vote of the people, not this council. Therefore, if you adopt this ordinance as it's drafted, instead of a resolution, and then taken for a special election later on in this year, it would violate the charter and it'll have no legal effect. So I just wanna make sure my, uh, opinion is clear. And again, we're here to assist and make it happen properly. But the second portion, again, I would like to seek an attorney general opinion, um, as, as to whether it would violate the mayor's expenditure power, whomever the mayor is, as you stated. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sala. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty years. I agree with Ms. Sala and I agree with Councilman Segura. That's why I'm opposed to this resolution because it is a violation of the charter, in my opinion. We went to the polls and we approved the hundred thousand dollars. And we need to go to the polls and approve. If you want to go from a hundred thousand to fifty thousand, we need to go back to the polls and approve this again. Now, first of all, let me just say, I'm totally opposed to any no-bid contract. I've stated this time and time at this podium. I've also talked to my delegation, my state senator and my representative in Baton Rouge. Now, Ms. Sala, if you're going to have a conversation with the Attorney General, you need to ask him what we need to do if this is a state issue, where we can get the state laws amended to include every contract in the city of Kenner, do away with no-bid contracts altogether, every contract should be put under the state's open bid laws. Now, if this is something we can do as a city without the state, fine. If it's a state issue, then we need to talk about this. I've been talking about it for several years now. And I can understand why nobody in Baton Rouge wants to, wants to put all contracts under the open bid laws because then it would lessen the chance of the political payback. Not one, no one person should ever have to, to give a contract to whoever they please without any kind of bid. That's undemocratic, far as I'm concerned. I don't think one person should have that power to do that. Should all be put under the open bid laws, every last one of them. If you want to pass a resolution in here, I suggest you put a resolution on the table and send it up to Baton Rouge requesting that we have all contracts in the city of Kenner put under the open bid laws. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Mr. Taft?
Greg Taft, thirty-seven twenty, West Loyola Drive. The silence. Your comment, I believe, was that if this got passed, it could not be enforced. So it would become meaningless. Is, am I right?
That's my legal opinion, yes.
Okay. And the other thing is, Councilman Brannigan, why would you want to take the vote away from the people? I mean, if you want this, and, and I'm not saying I disagree with the concept. What I disagree with, we have a charter. I thought, and I used to think, but I, I'm beginning to wonder if I was wrong, that this council is supposed to work within the charter and is supposed to uphold what the charter stipulates. You're, you're, the legislative branch makes legislation based on what the charter allows. Now unfortunately, the charter also says that the chief, that the chief of police, KPD, is really supposed to make sure that the charter is enforced. I, I don't know where he's at. He's not, I don't know if he's here, but I wished he was because he should be enforcing that this particular legislation should not even be up unless you want to make, make the decision that you want to make the change and then create the referendum to put it out for the voters. That's how it should be. And, and if it went out to the voters, they may agree with you. But, but right now, you're trying to change the charter, which really is not enforceable, doesn't make sense, or make an ordinance that's not enforceable, it makes no sense. All I'm asking you is, I understand what you're trying to do. But let's do it right. And let's do it by what the people said in the very beginning when this charter was developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taft.
Mr. Taft, I'm not trying to take the vote away from any voter. Let's make sure we're clear on that. If I was trying to raise this from a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, I could see that being a problem. Reducing it has the taxpayers' dollars in mind to make sure that money spent is money well-spent. And that's what the, my, that's why I put this legislation on. I'm not trying to break the charter. I don't agree with Ms. Sala. I've talked to several other people. But we will, we will get through this, okay? But I'm not trying to take the vote away from anybody. Let's make sure we're clear on that.
All I can say is, action speaks louder than words. If you want to do it, yes, do it right. That's all I'm asking you to do. If you feel that strongly about it and the council feels that strongly, I'm just asking. As a citizen, bring it up. Y'all make the determination you want to reduce it. Then bring it as a referendum, whenever it can be, whether it be in November or what have you. That's all I'm asking and saying you should do, which is what the charter calls for. Changes to that charter is very specific, has to be voted on by the people. We are not Jefferson Parish. We are Kenner government, not Jefferson Parish government. That's all I'm saying. That charter was put into effect for a reason. The people were strongly, were strong about why they wanted to create that charter. And that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Councilwoman McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So this legislation is clearly good, good government legislation to give the council more legislative oversight over the contracts that are being exchanged, that are being created and administered by no-bid. I don't, there's, you know, I, I agree with Councilman Brannigan that giving us more legislative oversight does not in any way violate the charter. That, I mean, you know, giving us more information, giving us the ability to approve and work together does not viol, is not a violation of the charter. If, as Councilman Brannigan said, that if we wanted to increase it, that, that would be going against the will of the people. The will of the people is that we have legislative oversight over, over a certain amount of, you know, level of, of contracts. So if we choose and we can work together with the administration, obviously, you know, any future administration, they can provide us information and they could, it could come to, to seek our approval regardless of if it's required by ordinance or not. That's not our, that, that would not be a violation of the charter if they all of a sudden came and said, you know, we, we want to have all of our contracts that are fifty, seventy-five thousand or under approved by the council. That's not a violation of the charter. This ordinance is not a violation of the charter. This is providing, especially given the increase of, you know, ninety thousand dollar contracts by multiple vendors, this is giving us the ability to do our job. As I've said in multiple, you know, in multiple meetings in the past, I think it's very important that the citizens feel that they have, that we are working, all of us are working and doing our job. We can't do our job if we don't have the ability to review these contracts and to give oversight and to give feedback on, on any of these contracts. While I respectfully, you know, understand the attorney's opinion, it is an opinion. There are lots of opinions that have been given over the past year from city attorneys that have not been respected and have not been listened to. So while I, you know, agree, you know, respect her, I'm, I'm not, this is, this is not something that I agree with. And I believe just, we did an ordinance, or actually, I believe a resolution, requesting that public records request be shared with us. That is not required by the charter. It's not even spoken about in the charter. That's just information sharing. And now we get a lot of more information. And this is just an extension of, we have the ability to review it. We have the ability to designate these dollars. We have the power of the purse. We review the budgets. We make sure that the budgets are allocated out and, and have questions. This is just another extension of our legislative oversight. I don't think that there is, and also to point out, it's not a violation of the charter unless a citizen or someone and a judge claims that there is, that the charter is violated. There, I would be very hard-pressed to find a judge that says more legislative oversight over government spending is a violation of the charter. And, you know, there's a, there's an example in purchasing policy that the state policy requires a certain amount of oversight and, and ability. And Kenner has a more strict policy as a result. We can be more strict, we just can't extend that policy. So I'm a hundred percent in favor of this. And I would be in favor of doing it, being more extensive, but, you know, baby steps, baby steps. I think we all need to make sure that we're all working together and that we're all having that transparency that is so important that the citizens want. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you. First off, I wanted to thank Councilman Brannigan. This was a lot of work, obviously, putting this report together. The amounts, it, it sheds a lot of light on how contracts are handled by the city and by the administration in particular. Before this administration, it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. But as of the last three or four years, maybe even five, it goes into the millions of dollars, with the last being almost six million dollars. With that, we got a problem. I feel like this council is being circumvented by breaking down what should be one large contract. And you take it and you put it into multiple smaller contracts. That does, and it doesn't appear before the council that way. So it, in effect, it robs the public from seeing how money is being spent. And it strips away transparency at these meetings. When we have a large contract that's broken down to smaller contracts, it doesn't come before us. So that's, that's a problem. It's a major concern in government. We, the council, are the gatekeepers of our citizens' taxpayer dollars. We are procedurally providing, we are procedurally being prevented from overseeing the expenditure of significant proceeds on a reoccurring basis. This administration has contracted with vendors totaling multiple of millions of dollars annually as the administration has done so over multiple years. This is a major problem and it needs immediate corrective measures. The proposed legislation would be a quick fix, as everybody's saying. This, this, this will fix it. Or do we want to put on a referendum? I understand. Some say this legislation may violate the charter. It's simply their opinion, and I disagree with that opinion. I believe that the proposed ordinance augments our city charter. It makes it more restrictive, which is okay, as long as it does not broaden or loosen those provisions. But I'm not here today to provide an illegal, a legal opinion. I'm here today to provide my argument and thoughts as to policy. This is good government. It provides, it provides much-needed transparency that our public demands. So therefore, I'm in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank everybody for their comments because I think that is always great to do. Also like to thank Attorney Sally and Councilman Brannigan for working together on this. But, you know, sometimes people work together and they agree to disagree. And I think we are at an impasse with that. Nothing against the attorney or Councilman Brannigan, they disagree. You know, for, I, I, I will be supporting this because I think, I think it is good government. I think most of the people that I have spoke to that have read this believe that good government is always better to do. And that's, that's all we're trying to do. If, if we put this in, it is not against one administration. It is for all administrations. Maybe in the past, it addresses them too. They're not here, but it's not personal or anything like that. We believe it's good government. Either you're going to support it or you're not going to support it. Attorneys are going to have different opinions, as always. And we have to respect them for their ability, what they have, their knowledge. But there are going to be disagreements sometime. If Attorney Sally believed that the Attorney General opinion is good, by all means, we should try to get that. I mean, that is, that is absolutely true. And I think she should go forward and do that. I believe, as Councilwoman McKenney said, if a citizen believes that it is something to be contested, by all means, they should do that. At the end of the day, if we vote on it and it passes, then the administration has to support it or don't support it. It falls down to that. If they choose not to, then that, that brings us somewhere else. But if we vote to put this in today and it's not contested by a citizen or by someone, that is another, that is another, that's another situation we have to deal with. So I think that we will either support this or not support this. And we will see how this goes through the process. And whatever it comes out to be, that's what, that's what we're going to do and have to adhere to it. So let's start the process and see where we, where we fall out at on this. And if the citizens are really detested or against this, they will come up here and let us know, for sure. So again, I will be supporting it and look forward to the, the good government measures that this piece of legislation will do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilman Hayes?
I agree with Councilman Wilmot that a lot of hard work went to this. And I also thank Councilman Brannigan. I'm not going to be here, but I suggest to all of you, what you do, do it right. Don't correct a wrong by doing another wrong. The attorney has told us that she not, she doesn't believe this is correct as we look at the charter. I'm not going to be here very much longer. But the effects of what we have done this past year will haunt the city of Kenner for a long time. So I really think you ought to start doing things right. What, if everybody that could vote would see what's in this, it's sickening. It really is. But don't correct a mistake with another mistake. Talk to the Attorney General. Go to see what the Attorney General says. Go for a referendum. So even if a referendum would cost you two million dollars, this, just this last year, we've spent over five million dollars looking at this nonsense. This is corruption. Change it. You got the capability of changing it right now. Don't correct a wrong by another wrong. Do it right. Do it sensible. I'm a practical person. I'm glad I'm not running again. But let me tell you, I apologized before. I feel, I feel that I have been taken advantage of, and we all have been taken advantage of, by not paying attention to some of the things we're looking at here. I'd like to say we ought to put this in City Hall and let everybody see this because again, it is bad. So again, thank you, thank you all. It looks like it's going to pass anyway because we got four votes I'm, are here. But again, I would suggest you start doing things right. And that's what the citizens need. Get a referendum. Go out, talk to the Attorney General. Don't take this action today. It will pass today, but again, it's not the right thing to do. But the intent of this is surely the right thing to do. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brannigan?
Close?
Please.
Yeah, um.
Wait, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Councilman Segura?
Oh, thank you. And just brief, you know, after hearing my colleagues' comments, I want to be clear on this. Good government comes in all fashions, not just their opinions. Comes in other opinions too, to have good government. So as we said, there's already four names submitting this legislation. It's a done deal, I got that. But that doesn't make it good government. The good government is living and breathing the charter that we have and following it, which was done in two thousand and twelve when it was put in to put a control on the professional service contracts that anything over a hundred thousand come to the council. That was good government, no question. Obviously, if now because of what we're seeing that there's a concern and it should be lowered, then do it the same way it was raised. Put it back out for the good government, the open-minded people. We've had two citizens just right now speak against this. We've had two citizens just right now speak against this. So all I'm saying is, don't look at the ones, particularly myself, who don't vote for this now, as against good government, because my good government says follow the charter to make this happen. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Foshee?
Is everybody done? I don't want to interrupt.
I'm sorry?
Is everybody done? I don't want to interrupt, if you're still, yeah. George, okay. May I? So I appreciate, there is a lot of work put into this, but I think what you, what we would propose to do is to give you a report with parameters in it, so you get an accurate report. Right now, we're not finished just looking at 2021, and 1.2 million of what you have listed in 2021 was approved by the council. So everything you see here, if all of this were what you say it is, I would be disgusted too, but it's not factual. So what we would like an opportunity to do is to run this report based upon the facts, give it back to you, and identify what you approved, what you didn't approve, and then what is emergency expenditure, because you could put a 10-cent cap, and emergency expenditure is going to fall outside of that in a declared emergency. We 100% want to support this. 100% want to be able to put this up. These contracts are on the web for everyone to see. You get a report every month with every contract signed by the mayor. Absolutely, positively, 100% want to make sure you know what's going on. But please, do not put a report out in the public saying that these, all of these contracts were done without anybody knowing about it, when in fact, you have approved at least 20, at least 20 of these contracts in 2021, and we're not done yet.
2021? And we're not done?
They're listed by year. So we've just started looking at the 2021, and she's going against...
This is the first time I've seen this, so I'm doing it right now. So that's what she says. We're not done reviewing it.
I understand. No, I just, okay. Oh, sorry, Mayor, I thought you were...
Oh, he's closing.
I'm closing, yeah.
I think Councilman Branigan wanted to go, but I didn't want to cut him off, but I just had one more last...
Well, if anybody else has anything to say, speak before our close.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. My opinion is not about the intent. And again, as I offered to Councilman Branigan, whatever the intent is of the council, I work for the council as well, I work for the city of Kenner. My job is to make sure you do it the right way. If you look at Section 10, specifically Section 1001, and I'll read it verbatim. "This charter may be amended, replaced, or repealed only by majority vote of the qualified electors of the city voting in a referendum called for such purpose pursuant to applicable state law." It doesn't say, oh, if you want something to go down, or anything that's in the charter that's going up or decreasing it, you don't have to amend it that way. It says specifically, "This charter may be amended, repealed, replaced, or repealed only by majority vote of the qualified electors of the city voting in a referendum called for such purpose pursuant to applicable state law." Again, I'm only talking about the way it's done, the way, it's the form it's in. And we in legal can assist. And again, we already started the draft. I've already reached out to the Secretary of State, and I already drafted it. Myself and Jennifer already gave it to Councilman Branigan. So we can make this happen if that is the council's wish. It was done in 2012 by resolution. We followed that format. It has to be by resolution, because again, the charter cannot be amended by you. So it makes sense. Resolution, and then you take it to the commission, the bonding commission. We sent, there's a package already sent to me by Secretary of State. I'm waiting for them to send me how much it would cost this whole thing for the taxpayers. We can make this happen in a timely fashion. I just have to get everything to the Secretary of State by June 22nd, in order for it to make the November 8th election date. So in my one-day conversation with Councilman Branigan yesterday, we were able to make everything happen and a draft in place. I have copies also for everyone. I had copied before I spoke to Councilman Branigan this morning, that he was planning to go forward with his own legislation. We had it ready from his Natalie, if you all wanted to get it to the floor. I have also copies of the previous one that was done in 2012, where they followed this format, which created Section 0209, which is what Councilman Branigan's legislation is trying to change. And again, it has the backups in there, where they started off with 50, but it actually passed at 100, and it was done by resolution, and they took it to the vote of the people, per charter. That's all I'm asking. I'm just saying for us to just follow the law, but in any event, I understand, many attorneys might be in, and you've listening to all sorts of attorneys. I'm going to seek an Attorney General opinion on this particular thing, so that you all get an informed opinion from the Attorney General. Don't have to believe me, that's fine, but I'm going to still seek it, and I just wanted you all to know. But if you all want to defer it, I'm going to try to expedite it as quickly as possible before the next council meeting, so at least you get the Attorney General's opinion. And if the other opinions, and if the Attorney General's opinion disagrees with mine, at least you know for sure. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Ms. Sally, I just would like to interject this. I don't think anybody doesn't believe you. I think, just from some of the conversations, and if anybody's had any dealings with attorneys, you can get enough opinions from an attorney that might be the answer you're looking for. So I'm not slighting you at all. I think the Attorney General opinion should be requested, and I'd be anxious to see what the response is. Thank you.
I'll expedite that, sir, as quickly as possible.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes. I do want to just interject about and respond to what Councilman Hayes said about us not doing our oversight jobs. I feel like that the majority of us have done a damn good job in trying to make sure that the finances and having the proper legislative oversight has been done. So I do take offense to that and would like to, if he feels like he has not been done a good job, to please limit those comments to himself and his other colleagues. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Hayes?
My comments, my comments were meant that there's a lot on this paper that we didn't even see. It was passed without our knowledge. My humble opinion is, it doesn't matter, because we are responsible. Nothing should be paid unless we know about it. We're the ones that okay the bills. Now, if somebody had a scheme, or if somebody paid and we didn't see it, that's a problem. And that's what we have here. But again, don't correct a wrong by a wrong. Get the Attorney General's opinion. Go out for a referendum if you have to, because I guarantee you, in this day and age, right now, it's going to pass big time with our constituents. But again, I've been in management all my life, executive management. When I look at this right here, yeah, I have to, I have to take part in this. I have to own this, because it happened under my watch. Please understand that. There's no getting around it. But I think, and it might pass today, again, I'm counting the votes, I think I see four votes. I'd defer this. I would defer this, and then get the Attorney General's opinion, and do it right. Let's start doing things right. Again, the city of Kenner has a long way to go to make sure our name is held in the right manner. We're not there right now, gang. We're hurting. I worry about my property values. How do we expect businesses to come here? This is what this is all about. You can't sugarcoat what is happening right now. I don't care how you try.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Branigan?
Yes. I just want to make sure everyone knows that's watching this and that's here. Ms. Foshee provided the original document with all of the documentation on the numbers and what's on my spreadsheet. I, when I saw the numbers for the later years, it startled me that that much money was being sent out through professional contracts, or whatever you want to call these things. There is one company on here, because I did a sort of this to sort by company name, and they made $870,000, $415,221, I mean, 2021. When I saw that, that's why I put in the deal where we have to know, or we are going to monitor anyone that gets over $50,000. If the administration comes to this council, and it's a viable deal that we have to get done, and a lot of stuff is on here, basically, I don't see an administration having a problem getting stuff passed. But it is startling to me, seeing some of the amounts that are on here. It's like $90,000 contracts we're giving away M&amp;M's. It's unbelievable. In 2021, there are 129 contracts. 23 of them were either a penny or zero. 100 and, I'm sorry, 48 of them were $70,000 plus. 48 contracts. That's a lot of money. Now, I tell you, I do not want to violate the charter. And if my colleagues feel that, you know, maybe I should defer this to meetings, I would agree to do that, only if we can, if Ms. Sally is confident that she can get an Attorney General's opinion in the next two weeks.
I used to work for the Attorney General's office. So as soon as I finish this meeting, I'm going to reach out and let them know we're submitting something and to find out how, you know, how long it will take to turn around time. So I will definitely reach out today, and hopefully, they'll be able to give me something. But I will definitely give them something by Monday, as in the official request, and I'll find out how long it will take, and I'll make sure to update this council.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Wilmot.
My question is, is that somebody mentioned a one-meeting deferral, and now I'm hearing two?
No, one meeting.
One meeting. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You said two, Councilman.
Oh, I said two. I'm sorry. One meeting.
Okay.
One meeting deferral. It...
Thank you. That clarifies it.
I can't speak for the Attorney General. That's why I'm saying, once I'm done with this meeting, I will definitely reach out, and I'll update this council as soon as I know.
Ms. Sally, if we keep the $100,000 that's in the charter in place, but we limit the $50,000 payment to the vendor, is that violating the charter?
I would say yes, because you are, you're stepping on the mayor's expenditure power. That's why it would violate the charter, but also violate the state law and other Attorney General opinions. And that's why, either way, I'm going to, I think it would benefit us to seek an Attorney General's opinion on either point. I've seen Attorney General opinions about councils' ability or lack of ability thereof to limit the mayor's power in certain other circumstances, different parishes, different other organizations, different places. Nothing specific to this point, which is why I'm saying I think it would benefit us all to seek it on this general point regarding vendors, and see if the Attorney General agrees or disagrees with you.
Yeah, well, I don't see how it impedes the mayor. He can still authorize $100,000 contract, and basically, we're just watching the payments out.
If you're asking him to pick a specific vendor, not a vendor, but if you're saying you can limit his power regarding vendors, that's what I'm saying, or power, like you might have multiple vendors, or one vendor who has multiple contracts, because they're different scopes. If you're limiting the mayor's ability to do that, I don't know if that violates his abilities, his expenditure power, which is where, again, I'm saying we should seek Attorney General opinion, because I've seen different types, and I can send them to you, but not on this particular point.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Councilman Segura.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to try to interject that if you were agreeable to the one-meeting deferral, and that if the opinion comes in to give us the guidance, great. If it did not make it in time, we can certainly consider a deferral for another meeting at that point, if we think it's still going to come in soon. That's all I'm offering.
And in the meantime, I can also send you what I have seen of other Attorney General opinions that have to do with expenditures, the council versus a mayor in a different circumstance, not on point to this one, but close in line to this one.
Councilman Hayes?
Mr. Segura, I always say, you know the charter better than anybody. That is a good suggestion. One deferral doesn't come back, we can defer it again. But that's the right thing to do. I keep repeating, don't correct a wrong with a wrong.
Councilman Branigan?
I do not want to violate the charter. I do not want to take the vote away from the people, as Mr. Teff said, and I will agree to a one-meeting deferral to see if we can work this out. I just hope that before the next meeting, we don't have a whole bunch of $90,000 contracts going out.
I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, for a one-meeting deferral. Is there any discussion on the one-meeting deferral? Seeing none, council members, please vote on a one-meeting deferral. Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Nay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Nay.
Motion passes 5-2. Councilmembers McKenney and Carroll are opposed. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number 7 of the Rules of Organization, Business Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council meetings of July 7th, 2022, to July 14th, 2022, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council meeting of July 22nd to July 29th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request to withdraw this resolution from the agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes, to remove this resolution. Council members, please vote to remove. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 526 Salvador Road, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Council members, please vote.
Excuse me, Council. Thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 13C is a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 706 Taylor Street, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Council members, please vote. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda? I have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,955. An ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Red Bud Supply to supply rain gear and boots in accordance with letter bid number 22-1995, in the amount of $20,000 for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Is there any discussion? Any... Seeing none, council members, please vote. Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brennan is, Branigan is absent.
He can't show it up for.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12...
Ms. Foshee? Ms. Sally? Can this wait till after the meeting? Please? Thank you.
Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,957. An ordinance authorizing the use of existing Jefferson Parish contract number 55-19940 with Trucks and Transportation Equipment Company Incorporated for the purchase of automotive parts and supplies on an as-needed basis and an amount not to exceed $75,000 annually for the Department of Fleet Management. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brennan?
Branigan? Brennan? Brennan?
Is there any discuss, is there any discussion? Seeing none, council members, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morella. I apologize, sir.
That's okay. Apology accepted.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty years. A few minutes ago, we just had a discussion about purchasing-
Excuse me, Mr. More, excuse me.
Yes.
Ms. Foshee, please.
I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr. Morella, please.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. A few minutes ago, we just had a discussion about purchasing new vehicles and looking at them every five years, but, you know, no one talked about this, this resolution, this, this issue right here. So I'd like to know, from the director from Kenny Melvin, how many maintenance people do we have in our fleet department? And what is the maintenance schedule on the vehicles that we have? Now, we talking about spending seventy-five thousand dollars, and let me just say this, it doesn't matter whether it's a piggyback contractor, when it is. It's an allocation. An allocation is an allocation. So I'd like to know how many maintenance people we have in our fleet department and what is the route, what is the schedule of maintenance on the vehicles that we have before looking at every five years, spending money to replace the vehicles? Can the director come up and please explain this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella.
Sue Renata, I'm the director of fleet management. We have five people working in fleet management right now. Our maintenance, we do all changes of vehicles for five thousand miles. Okay, we have five thou-
Why don't you have a seat, Mr. Morella? I said, why don't you have a seat?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have five thousand miles. We do the, uh, maintenance on our vehicles for, um, all changes. This contract itself is for parts. It has nothing to do with labor or repairs. We just recently purchased a, um, service, service body to put onto the wastewater's vehicle for the crane. And that's what this contract's pertaining to.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Wilmore?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item fifteen C is a resolution approving amendment number?
Number zero.
Madam Clerk?
One second, please. So that would be amendment number one. Thank you. To the agreement with Retief Oil and Fuel LLC to provide unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel for the City of Kenner to increase the agreement amount by five hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Fleet Management and the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. Any discussion?
Councilwoman McKenny, pardon me, Council Clerk.
Yes, thank you. I just want to confirm that this amount is for, is above the contract or obviously for a year, and then also how much has been spent year-to-date?
So yes, this is in addition to what you've already approved. We only have forty thousand left on the contract, and this covers the whole city. So this is police and the city vehicles. Obviously, with the hurricane, we had a higher usage of, of diesel and gas. And then with the price of gas increasing and diesel increasing, we're reaching our cap, so we won't be able to make the next order without an increase.
And is, and the end date of this contract will be the end of this fiscal year or the end of this?
The estimated completion date on this is May twelfth of twenty-three, but it's an annual amount.
Okay, thank you.
In, in the future, could, could we start getting that information?
Do you want Cliff Notes before?
I think we talked about it at some point.
Okay.
But I know a lot's been going on to where we, you know, that's all spelled out and it might just reduce this.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at the agenda ahead of time and email y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty years. Liz, I'd like to ask you this question. It's five hundred thousand dollars now, that's pretty close to the cap you said, okay? What was it before it was, it went up to five hundred thousand?
No, we're adding five hundred thousand, so it was, yes.
Okay, so what is the original?
It was six sixty-five, six hundred and sixty-five thousand originally.
So you're adding five hundred thousand more to that?
Yes, sir. We've, we've spent close to six hundred and thirty so far.
It's gonna be over a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Councilman Wilmore?
And Ms. Herring, this is, this is going through, you said twenty-twenty-three, correct? Not twenty-two?
Yes, twenty-three.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Yep.
Oh, Councilman Carroll?
No, no. I just was exercising my hand, that's all.
All right, keep your hands under the desk.
Whoa. I don't want to exercise that way.
Oh, Lord.
Really? You went down that road, huh? Council, Council Clerk? Motion adjourned.
Council, Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Wilmore?
Yay.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item fifteen D is a resolution approving change order number two, final to the agreement with Cycle Construction Company LLC dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, regarding South Williams Boulevard Streetscaping, State Project Number H period zero-zero-nine-eight-zero-four, Federal Aid Project Number H zero-zero-ninety-eight-zero-four, Kenner Public Works Project Number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-eight dash miscellaneous for an increase of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents, and accepting the project as substantially complete for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmore. Councilman Carroll, do you have any comments?
No.
No? Councilman McKenny?
Yes. Can we get a clarification on what the additional thirty-four thousand was spent for, and how much of that was city dollars?
Yes. Is this working? I think we're, we're good. The, let me look at the breakdown. It's like about page three. We have twenty-four thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand was for, is, is an extra excavation. There wasn't a bid item for this, so they had to add this item. And this is, this accounts for all the excavation related to not only just the sidewalk installation, but all the utility conflicts that they encountered as well. The ninety-four hundred was for the utilities that they encountered that weren't shown on the drawings. So that's, that's a hundred percent city cost. I'm sorry, you asked about the cost. The first one is an eighty-twenty split. We have twenty percent of that twenty-five thousand.
And then also, so as a result of the, the, um, the dip changes, were those utilities added to the known plan, so in the future that won't happen again?
That, that'll be provided to the GIS contractor when they, when they ask for that. Will we be able to give that to them?
Okay, thank you.
He explained it. Thank you, Councilwoman McKenny. And I, I just want to add this. No matter whether it's city dollars or state dollars or federal dollars, it's all our tax dollars. Thank you.
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Wilmore?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item fifteen E is a resolution approving amendment number three to the engineering agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated dated March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, regarding Loyola Drive and I-ten interchange connection to the new terminal of the New Orleans International Airport, State Project Number H period zero-one-one-six-seven-zero, Federal Aid Project Number H zero-one-one-six-seventy, City of Kenner Project Number P W dash two thousand nineteen dash four dash A R, to increase the agreement amount by one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Branigan.
Is Mr. Schreiner? I didn't see you behind the, behind that. If you could give us a little information.
Good, good seat selection, I guess. Yeah, this, um, we originally received a proposal from Digital Engineering some time ago, and they, they, they proposed a four-year plan and had the fees spread out in four years. We decided to go with a two-year plan, and we wanted to have the benefit of two years to see how it went and where we spend in the money wisely. So after the two years, they've, they've, let me back up. We had one amendment, and the, and the amendment was for a hundred and fifteen thousand, but it was not really related to their efforts in, in doing what I would call program management. They, it was directly related to a forced main relocation that was needed. All of that, all of their fee and the construction costs will be reimbursed to the city. So we, we have no cost to that. It was just this, this contract was just a vehicle for, to get them paid. So the hundred and fif, a hundred, I'm sorry, the original contract was a hundred and fifty-three thousand. That is, it was originally intended to last two years. That has gotten us actually through three years. So we were able to spread the money over three years instead of two. So they're asking for another, another year, a hundred and fifteen thousand, which I would recommend. I think it's, it's money well-spent. We've had opportunity to work with them on this project. They're able to go to meetings that we're not able to go to, so it, it's, it's been a benefit to us.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKenny?
Yes. So what are exactly the services that are being provided for, for the fees? I, you know, like, is it consultants that are working, doing the job? Is it, I guess I just want to know more about what the work is.
Yeah, it's, it's staff, it's the consultant staff that goes to meetings, keeps up with a lot of items. Y'all see, you know, like traffic, when, when we have these, we have to reroute traffic. They're all involved with that. They bring issues to us when they have concerns. They're, they're keeping up with all the issues on that interchange project for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. Mr. Morella?
I just have one question for Mr. Schreiner. He said that the, he gets this information from digital, when they, you know, on the job site. Do we have any representatives from Kenner in your department, Mr. Schreiner, or anyone that you knew of from the City of Kenner, just accompanying this vendor and taking a look at it and themselves and reporting back to the city? Or we just relying on digital?
I'm able to go to some of the meetings in person, but most of the meetings are virtual, so I'm able to attend those. But I, I don't go to everyone, but I go to a number of them.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Wilmore?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item fifteen F is a resolution approving change order number one to the agreement with Ram J Construction LLC dated October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, regarding Lincoln Manor Subdivision Drainage Improvements Project, Facility Planning and Control, FPNC, Project Number Fifty-dash MF-one-dash-twenty-dash-zero-one, City of Kenner Project Number P W dash two thousand twenty-dash-six-dash-D R for an increase of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and accepting the project as substantially complete for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember McKenny. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Excuse me, one second. Madam Clerk? Yes, sir, Mr. Morella?
Okay. I, I thought Mr. Schreiner was going to get up and come up here ahead of me for an explanation. That's all I'm looking for, is an explanation for the change order, for the increase.
Yes, sir. This, this change order is just for conflict boxes. There were, as I remember, at least seven conflicts, and this, this was not a bid item either. So they, this, uh, the total cost for all the conflicts encountered on the project is, is this amount, thirty-four thousand dollars. Amount's been reviewed. It's the, we have an inspector out there, and we believe it to be a fair amount for the work done.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yay.
Wilmore?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance authorizing repairs to Unit sixty-fifty by Lee Tractor Company Incorporated, an authorized dealer, in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventeen cents for the Department of Fleet Management. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Blackstar Diversified Enterprises LLC for the purchase of five hundred, five-and-a-half-inch flat-blade cross with five-and-a-half-inch flat-blade holders, and five hundred twelve-inch flat-blade cross with twelve-inch flat-blade holders in accordance with the letter bid number twenty-two dash nineteen ninety-six for the sum of eight thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance authorizing the agreement with Messines Incorporated to provide disaster meal service in accordance with request for proposal number twenty-one dash sixty-six thirty-one. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the transfer of ownership of portions of state routes, L.A. forty-eight, Reverend Richard Wilson Drive, and L.A. forty-nine, Williams Boulevard, located with the city, within the City of Kenner from the state of Louisiana to the City of Kenner. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. We have none. Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Al Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty years. Special mention, I want to extend my thoughts and prayers to the Boyd family, Willie Boyd, longtime resident of Kenner, longtime member of VFW Post Seventy-seven Thirty-two, a Korean veteran, passed away. So I want to keep the Boyd family once again in my thoughts and prayers. Now, I want to respond to some comments that was made in here at the last council meeting. I want to direct this to you, Councilman Wilmore. I see Councilman Carroll's chair is empty, maybe he'll be back. Okay, first of all, item number twenty on the agenda is just what it says it is. Persons wishing to address the council on special subject matter. The reason it's there is because it's a requirement under the state's open meetings laws. Now, uh, I have a right to support any cause or any movement by my fellow citizens in this city at this podium. Now, however, if it's a good old boy pal of yours, and Councilman Carroll, and y'all personally offended by my comments, I could care less. Get that straight right now, okay? So that's about all I have to say on that issue, and I want to say this. One more thing before I close it out. Your comments, uh, and you certainly entitled to your opinion, Councilman Wilmont, all of us are. Now, you stated that there's no room in this chamber for politics at the last meeting. I don't consider this politics. I don't play politics at this podium. When I come up here strictly business, I don't play personalities neither. It's strictly business. Now, Councilman, now, I find it kind of hypocritical on your part, because that's what's been taking place in this chamber for the last two or three months. And based on the words again today of one of your own colleagues up there, it really is huggly heads here again today. So with that, anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Yeah, I heard my name spoken, Mr. Morella. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
You want me to repeat what I said?
I want you to repeat, accent, uh, perfectly, everything you said, please say it again.
Okay. I directed, I responded to your comments and Councilman Wilmont's comments from the last meeting.
Relating to?
Now, item number twenty is on the agenda, and it's just, it means just what it says. Persons wish to, wishing to address the council on special subject matter. It's there because it is required under the state's open meetings laws to have a public comment portion. I do not play politics at this podium. I do not play personalities at this podium. It's strictly business. And I've been doing it for almost fifty years. Now, I want to say, I'm, I'm going to repeat to you since you was out. Now, I have a right to support any movement or any cause by my fellow citizens in the City of Kenner. And if it involves a good old boy pal of yours and Councilman Wilmont, and you are personally offended by it, I could care less. That's what I have to say, Councilman Carroll.
Okay, so I don't remember exactly what comments you are referring to, but so.
Look at that, look, look, we won't waste a whole lot of time here. Review the council meeting from last, the last council meeting, and you'll see it here for yourself. Now, so we, not, avoid having a back and forth, but if you want a back and forth, we can have one.
Your six minutes are up, Mr. Morella.
Thank you. Thank you for that extra time, Councilman Brennan, because it was requested by Councilman Carroll.
I, I'm, I'm paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, uh, Councilman Brennan. Mr. Morella, thank you for your comments. Again, since you didn't mention it exactly, I'm going to assume it was relating to your comments at this public meeting, the City of Council, about another elected official, your personal opinions. And you are entitled to your personal opinions. Uh, as an American, you are entitled to freedom of speech. But it doesn't mean you can say that, uh, the fire in here just because you're speaking. We have rules in the council. How are we to conduct ourselves at the meeting? I was addressing that, and I thought that your comments were breaking the rules, how I, my opinion, that you were addressing. What you say is fine to me. All I'm saying is, I don't think it was appropriate to address that. Councilman, my representative Stagney is not only my friend, but he is a representative for the people who I represent in the City of Kenner. So, you know, I'm not sure if he is yours, and you are still entitled to your opinion, but he is directly related to all of the people in District One. It is my responsibility to say things as it relates to his ability, when it's good, when it's bad, or when it's coming from someone else. So I'm just letting you know, and I don't really care if you care what I say either, but we have a good relationship, and we have always been able to express that. So I look forward to the future to disagreeing with you when I have, and you disagree with me. So let's just, just put that out there, so we're, we're good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilman Wilmont?
Thank you, and I'd just like to ditto Councilman Carroll's, uh, comments and statements so forth he just made. I, I agree, yeah, and, 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 Mr. Morella, you do have a right to come up during that special time and, 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 and state your opinion. But sometimes, some things, uh, when it are political in nature, they need to remain, uh, not at the podium, so that's, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Ann Beck? If you'd state your name and the district you live in, please.
Yes. My name's Ann Beck. I live at twenty-nine Palmetto. I'm concerned about the, can you hear me?
You'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm concerned about the tornadoes. The other night, I was watching it, and I'm thinking, you know, what could happen? This could happen to us in Kenner. And I decided, I've lived here since the seventies, so I Googled, and how many times Kenner has been affected by tornadoes, some more severe than others. The last one, I'm not going to go through all the, the dates, no time for it. The last one that was really severe was March eleventh, I mean, March ninth, two thousand eleven. It went to Grand Lake, Vintage, Joe Yenney. That's close to me. I worry about that. I realize the news meter, media has improved. Most people have cell phones, but we need tornado sirens in Kenner for the citizens. Sirens are the only definite ways to alert the public about impending tornadoes. Electricity goes off. We all know that, right? Cell phones lose their charge. Saint Charles Parish has the tornadoes. I mean, has the sirens. We need tornado sirens. Please save our citizens, install them in Kenner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Taft?
Uh, Greg Taft, thirty-seven twenty, West Loyola Drive. First of all, what I'd like to do is thank the Kenner Fire Department. I think that was commendable that they went to Saint Bernard to help. And I think it's even commendable that the people that work in our fire department are willing to take those extra steps, and that they are willing to not only serve our city, but to help others. And I just wanted them to know that. I appreciate it. The, the other thing I want to bring up, which is very simple, is that while I understand, Councilman Branigan, what you, what you wanted to do. And I'm not saying I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying that what Councilman Hayes said, which does it better than I did, do it right. Do it the right way, and, and that's all, that's all we're expecting, is for everything to be done the right way. Y'all want transparency? Good, but let's do it all the right way. And that's, and that's, when it comes to the charter or things that affects the charter, y'all are here to, to enforce that charter. And that's all, and that's what I want to say about that. The, the other thing is, is that I have to ask a question. When a contract for under a hundred thousand dollars is done, does the council get to see that contract?
Not necessarily before. It depends. When we're looking, for instance, at twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-two, twenty-two contracts that the council approved. It's going to depend on the nature. But I think you're asking about those that the mayor would sign?
Right.
Yeah, the council gets to see them, but it's after the fact. They're attached to their monthly reports, and the, uh, public can see them because they're on, um, paper vision.
Okay, so, so it's not like it was hidden from the.
Mr. Taft, excuse me one second. Why don't you go ahead and finish your question, sir, so you, you don't use your three minutes up, and then.
My only thing was, I got confused, because I didn't know if y'all didn't see these contracts, or that if, 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 if they're there for you, y'all just didn't bother to look and investigate it yourselves. And then determine if it was right, because y'all have the right, and if something is wrong, to bring it up. And if you catch it when it happens and deal with it when it happens, then it's much easier to get it fixed. That way it's transparent, because now, because you found it, and they, they, and you're, and, because I'm taking it that, that we're hiding stuff, and that's why I'm asking. I just want to make sure we're not, if the administration is not hiding it, that y'all have access to it. Because if you have access, then I don't know why you can't just look it up or go to it and then address it. That's all I'm, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taft.
Well, Mr. Taft, uh, basically, we do get an email with a contract, but it's not in a format like a spreadsheet that, when I put it in, when I took, uh, the spreadsheet, converted it into Excel, that's when the numbers went berserk. So every week, if I have to go and pull out the three or four, ten, whatever, contracts and put them into my own spreadsheet, I'm going to have my assistant start doing that to address that issue. But we get an email with a list of contracts, and, uh, it's not like it's going to stand out like it did on this spreadsheet that the administration put out. Thank you.
Does the, does that list say the name of the vendor that the contract is with, that email that you get?
Uh, let me check. I think it does.
Yes, yes, it does.
I'm sure, actually, I'm sure it does.
And we, and there was a gap between June and, uh, about a month ago, that we didn't get anything. So, so they started sending the contracts last month for July, for last June. So unless we time travel, there's no way for us to have oversight over any of that information.
You're talking about June?
Last year, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Taft.
I don't know, but that's what screwed it up, because they couldn't access that anymore.
Mr. Matthew Hotard?
Can I just add to that?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I mean, Mayor?
But do realize we had a cyber attack in there, and we were cleaning some things up to make.
In June?
I don't know the month. That's why I was just asking, Denver.
It was in September.
Right, but there was a gap in there from September until just recently with getting everything back on. So we do have I T here, but I can check with him and see where the, where the disconnect was. But also, it did have amounts in it also, so I don't, I mean, I don't want to say that it takes us, it doesn't take a spreadsheet or Excel to give you the amounts. We had the amounts. Okay.
Mr. Hotard, if you'd state your name and the district you live in, you have three minutes, please.
Yes, sir. Matthew Hotard, sixty-six Red Oak Drive, District Five. My wife and I built the house here roughly eight years ago. We moved from Lakeview, and, um, and we came here for a multitude of reasons. But one of the biggest reasons was, was the resources around Kenner. So number one is the police department, uh, in my opinion, second to none, especially coming from New Orleans and seeing the problems they have. Sure. Can you hear me? I'm better? Okay. The police department, um, second to none in my opinion, uh, especially coming from New Orleans and seeing the problems they have. I am a fourteen-year firefighter of the City of Kenner, and I'm also, uh, a newly appointed, um, president of our local, local fourteen twenty-seven union. There's a lot being talked about today about money and, and expenditures and things like that, and I thought it'd be prudent that I come on, up here and mention the fact that, uh, you know, the Kenner Fire Department is severely underfunded. And whether you know that or not, we are. Um, this is not a complaint. This is just a fact. Uh, we operate off of seven mills, which I believe is over thirty years old, with help from the general fund from the city. It wouldn't be fair for me to come up here and, and not mention the fact that we have gotten a new ladder truck. I do know that we have two pumpers that are being built right now to, to help our fleet. But, but in all that, we are still severely depleted. Over the past few years, we've gotten more firefighters, which is a great addition, because, uh, historically, we're, we're known for doing more with less. But I can tell you that there is a, a lot to be desired as far as moving forward with our department. I know that the, the budget is due for our department as well, and I, I would like to ask, and I know that we don't have a money tree, obviously, but I would like to ask that when the budget is, is proposed, and you're looking at what the monies are allocated to, that the, the pay of our department, um, which is not competitive, um, in the slightest, be looked at. And, and also, you know, that, that the men and women that protect this city every single day, just like we were hearing from our chief, um, are, are, are considered. Uh, I, I was kind of laughing at this gentleman saying that he had to wear water pants when he was driving a truck, and truth be told, some of our apparatus are so old, we, we do have water coming in through the top of our apparatus. And I, this is no fault of an administration or a chief, because obviously, these problems just don't happen overnight. But I feel like the, the, the funds and the money have to reflect the times that we're in. And, and I think that, that is not the case for our department. I'm speaking on behalf of our fire department, because it is something that I don't think that we do enough. I know you hear from our chief and other members of our chief staff, but you don't hear from the men and women who are in the station every day. We know the things that have happened. We know that maybe some things were brought to la, the light with the way that we live in our stations that weren't, wasn't really the way that the city or our department wanted to happen, but we are grateful that they were fixed. So at the end of the day, I would just like to ask that it is recognized that we do need more funds for our department. And even in the, the small amount that we have, that the monies, like I said earlier, that allocated to the proper funding, not only of our department, but for the pay for our men and women that, that put their lives on the line every day. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, I think I speak for everyone in this room. Thank you for your service and for everything the men and women of the Kenner Fire Department and other departments do for the city. It, it's, it's good to hear from another source.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
Chief, did you?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, wonderful. Like you said, one of our firefighters. These guys, uh, go above and beyond every day, show up every, every day for work.
A little louder, Chief, please.
These guys show up every day for work. They're here every day doing their job. Uh, we were here every day during Ida. Here for, every day during COVID, when other members were at their house, uh, isolating. These guys deployed for numerous events, not just Saint Bernard Parish, uh, Ida, Laura, Barry, uh, everything that happened the last couple of years, and we are underfunded. And I've, I've said that before. We're currently doing a pay study to increase their pay. Their starting pay is, uh, abysmal, to be honest, uh, so we're looking at, uh, asking for all these things in this budget up and coming. The mills that we collect, uh, as I said, are seven, when everybody else is paying twenty-five mills. So that contributes to our shortage of funding. The trucks are old, and I've said that before. Thank you for the purchase of the last two trucks. We're looking at, uh, putting a new truck in. We looked at it this year to put one in this year, but with the storm and everything, we got a little delay with coming up with the proposal, but we need to, we need new equipment. Some of our equipment is so old that our mechanic, our contracted mechanic, will tell you, other departments don't use our frontline equipment as backups. So we do need more money, and, um, station repairs, station rebuilds, this is where these guys live. I've said that before. So we need to do better for these guys that put their lives on the line for the community every day. I reach out to other departments to see where I can get funding from. We have a problem with the medical response to the community. You know, these guys are responding to medicals and everything. We're asking more of them. So we, you know, uh, met with Ochsner representatives yesterday to see what they could contribute to, uh, they met with me to ask me what, how can they contribute to help us, uh, be a better community partners with them. So it's a lot going on within the department, a lot of changes, a lot that didn't happen over the years. That's not any one of you guys' fault or my fault that, but we found that here, and we need to correct it and do what's best for these guys that risk their lives every day for this community.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Wilmont?
First off, I wanted to thank the chief. Um, we're blessed to have you, so, uh, thank you for all that you do and your department and your men, and, and it's outstanding. Thank you. I just wanted to make that comment, Chief. Thank you. And also, I wanted to congratulate the Loyola, Loyola University Men's Basketball Team for winning the twenty twenty-two N A I A, um, Lo, um, National Championship. The Loyola team made history this past Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The last time that this was accomplished by Loyola was in nineteen forty-five, seventy-seven years ago. Outstanding feat. Uh, they went all the way, y'all. National champions. Um, that's, that's awesome. A special congratulations to our own Andrew Stagney, who is a team member on the Loyola University National Championship Team and is the son of State Representative Joe Stagney and Denise Stagney. I also wish to congratulate their family and the entire Wolf Pack community. This is not only great accomplishment for Loyola University, but it's also, uh, the City of Kenner, the City of New Orleans, and the great state of Louisiana. So awesome. Uh, glad to know that they, they did, in fact, win and went all the way. That, that speaks volumes for Loyola Wolf Pack Men's Basketball. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Segura?
Thank you. Uh, just make sure I put this in. I would be remiss. I know our police chief's not here, but I think he would certainly want to congratulate our police department for the fine job that they do too, not taken away from the fire department and our fire chief and the firefighter that was just here talking about his needs. And, uh, certainly, the chief will be talking at this budget year, I'm sure, on his needs. So for our policemen sitting back there, thank y'all for everything y'all do, and the rest of the men and women of the Kenner Police.
Thank you. Councilman Hayes?
Well, if you haven't already, don't forget to vote tomorrow. Make it count.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.